Good evening, everybody. Spike, you know, in your jacket. I think it makes us very anxious. It made that whole country. I believe the United States of America, the Republic of which is the name of our nation, our God, new this world, the third reason we have this power. Before we call a war, I'd like to point out that the sign up sheet if you wish to create. When you call a comment period, this is the last chance for us also to follow the law. And for the people who are participating online, raise their hands electronically and have the recognition of your second in the air. Before we all have my question. Councilor Lane. Is that here? I'm young, I've made one mistake already. Councilor Lane is present, thank you. Councilor McCauley is present. Councilor Shan.
Present.
Councilor Tontar.
Here.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
President Wallace. Councilor Wallace.
Up here.
Councilor Z.
Here.
Councilor Connell.
Present. Oh, oh, sorry. He's here. Devin.
That's your vote. Councilor Khan. He's absent, I believe.
Yes.
Councilor Agnewman. He's absent, I believe. We have a call, Mr. President. Thank you. Ten D is putting contract from spring three.
No, he's right here, panelists, I know. Your document, there you go. All right. He doesn't mean a committee. Can you kick that? Wait, wait a minute. I'm not on. Right? So what would that is, but that's not me. It would be a confusion unless it sends. I don't know.
Do you get two votes?
We're trying to determine right now. If I recognize Councilor Tontar, I can recognize directly. Somebody listening. Uh, so let's walk through the late files. I've got a late file. There are late files, Mr. President. Uh, there are six of them. Uh, shall I run through them? Point two fifty-six, Mark Murray as marshal until six thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Point two fifty-seven is Erin Sheedy. Two, River Street, the council on aging until five thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. Point two fifty-eight, Nancy Alcon, fifty-eight Darkback Street, the board of registrar until three thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Order two sixty-three, the FY twenty-two, a revolving fund order. Order two sixty-four is amending our county rules twenty A and application forty-one, which is for the thirtieth annual walk against domestic violence to be held ten three, two thousand twenty-one. Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files. Set aside. Discussion. There you go. All those papers I have. I agree. Uh, the roll call for receiving the late files. Councilor Lane. Yes. Pauline.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan is absent. Councilor Agnewman is absent. Thank you. Uh, public comment. Come and ask me to explain. Fine, um, we have six people who've signed up to speak. I'm taking one of the order books that's signed up. But I advise you that under the rules of the council, you have two minutes to speak. I ask you to stand in front, identify yourself by name and home address and speak through what we call the owl that microphone is taking. Is it? Glad to answer safety directions from the cliff. Uh, first up is Dennis Morale.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dennis Morale. Just wanted to put a face to the name. I'm applying for the new building inspector job. I have twenty-one years of experience in a family company. I love Newburyport. I've been coming here since I was a little kid. Wanted everyone to take a look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Koot.
Hello. My name is Robert Kout. Uh, thirty-six Lime Street. It's close enough. Thirty-six Lime Street. Um, I was informed a few weeks ago that there is an opening on the planning board. I sent a letter to Mayor Holliday along with some background information and asked that I be considered for a appointment to that open position. Uh, I'm an architect that worked in Boston for over forty years. Also spent time overseas between two thousand thirteen and two thousand eighteen in Morocco and the Netherlands. Uh, most of my experience is with commercial architecture, mixed-use projects, including retail, office, residential, hospitality uses, most in urban environments that would relate closely to what's happening here in Newburyport. My wife and I have lived here since November in two thousand nineteen, just before everything closed down. Uh, but we have a very good impression of the city. I'd like very much to be involved because there are a lot of opportunities going forward for the city and would love to be part of the planning board's guidance and that process going forward. So thank you for that.
You definitely thank me. Well, they were attentive of the pronunciation of your name. Next up, Katie O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kathleen O'Connor Ives. I reside at Two Prince Place in Newburyport. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the application for an event for the annual Cruises of the Fifty's Bar Show as the president of the Raider Newburyport Chamber of Commerce and Industry. We met with Public Safety and I'm available for any questions and I'm joined by Wes Tottenfield this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Good to see you. Now, the next name, um, is challenging the name. Looks like. First name, sort of.
That's my name.
Wendy T. Riley.
That's my name. I'll come with her in case she has other questions.
Wesley. Wesley?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to state?
I know at this point if you have questions that she needs assistance on, I mean, for a count.
That's fine. Thank you. Uh, Mary Ann Lynch.
Good evening, Mary Ann. Plan C sixteen Neptune Street. I'm also the vice president of the Board of Directors of the Firehouse Center for the Arts. And I am here to speak in favor of the discussion tonight, um, to allow the firehouse to extend their stay on the waterfront park on the east side of the park. I'll show up, check up for the next three weeks. Uh, we were here, you know, a couple of weeks ago. You were so generous to set a special meeting when we got into a little bit of a dilemma about whether we're going to hold this great, uh, presentation. And since that night, we have been gathering input, as I know many of you have. I know that Councilor Lane has, as he shared with me. I know Councilor Vogel was out there with a sound machine measuring that. Um, we have had literally zero complaints from the neighbors. In fact, the neighbor that was so kind to come two weeks ago and sat here very concerned about what her tunnel was going to look like, actually called John Morninghead and said, when I had my door shut and in the house, I don't even hear it. And then she was so kind enough to call him back when there was some, um, some rock is going on down there and, um, some of, some kids moved down there playing around with the equipment. So, um, we made a friend, which is a real good thing. If you've been down there at all, um, I would encourage you to do it because people love it there. People, even the ones that don't buy tickets, are hovering around the edges of, of the fencing and listening to the music. And, um, it's just a great feel. Uh, we have three weeks left for this show, um, and we're selling tickets like crazy. And so that we would ask, I know John Morninghead is one of the, you're in the, we have, we have operations director from the firehouse here. We have the president of the board here. We're here to answer questions, sure John gets hung up, but I would ask you to consider re-upping us for another three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now Jenny Gannon.
Chair, Mr. President, that's my terrible hand, sorry.
Oh, I see now. Okay. Last side of the white spot. Jenny Gannon, eighteen Terry Street, Chair of Newburyport Commission of Disabilities. I'm just here to speak on behalf of Dennis Morale. While he is, before you to be hired as the building inspector, with that hat also comes ADA coordinator, which is a very important role for our disability commission. And I just wanted to let you all know that so far, just in, in the role that he's been sort of, um, intermediate on, he's been incredibly approachable. He's been very responsive. He's been, um, really, really great and Disability Commission is very eager to have him, um, be official. So hopefully that will happen tonight with all your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that concludes the public comment period. All those individuals who have asked to speak, I mean, young people, I'm just going to scan the attendees and see if there's anything that breaks that can, which should speak. Uh, not seeing any. Um, we'll proceed with the regular agenda. Actually, mayor's update. Is Mayor Holliday on board? And she's allowed to speak, Mayor Holliday.
Good evening, councilors. Can you hear me? Thank you. Um, quick update. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank you again, uh, for all your work on the FY twenty-two budget. I know the amount of hours that you put in, the due diligence, and I am incredibly grateful for the hard work that you did. And I'm also very grateful that it was a unanimous approval this year. Uh, wanted to let you know that, um, by today or tomorrow, the Harbor Commission, I have been working with on our, uh, re-application to, uh, continue as a designated coast guard city. There's a nice paragraph in my update about, uh, that process and really, um, I'm looking forward. I appreciate the Harbor Masters work and all the work that we did to obtain letters of support from all of our electeds. And I'm hoping that, uh, we will be re-designated again, um, as a, uh, coast guard city. Also wanted to let you know on July second, I have been invited to attend the US Coast Guard Sector Boston Change of Command Ceremony where Captain Eric Doucette will be relieved by Captain Kaylee Benson. I always look forward to those events in Boston. Uh, City Bulkhead, uh, we signed a contract today with GEI to complete the site inspection, regulatory approvals, final design and bid docs for phase two work on the central waterfront bulkhead. Uh, the thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars is allocated from, uh, a portion of the remaining from funds from phase one of the bulkhead project. Uh, I think all of you are aware from the coverage of how, um, well-received our Juneteenth celebration was in front of City Hall. Uh, we celebrated on June eighteenth. Uh, thank you to DPS for, uh, putting up a second flagpole, which allows us an opportunity to, you know, fly, uh, different flags that, uh, I think are important in the city. Uh, we did raise the Juneteenth flag that day. Uh, we had speakers, Ed Carson, the dean of multicultural education at Governors Academy, uh, Reverend Rebecca Bryant, First Religious Society, Reverend Jared Mercer of St. Paul's, and we had, uh, prayers offered. And Deb Zabo's students in the high school class did an amazing job with creating a special poem for the day. Uh, so thank you all. It was a great event. Our, uh, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Alliance is doing, uh, the third of our final community conversations tomorrow night. Uh, there's still, uh, I think there's a waiting list at this point, but there's a possibility that you could still get in if you're interested in being part of the conversation tomorrow night. Uh, our plan going forward is to work on, um, implementation of some of the action plans we identified during our SWAT analysis, as well as training our Human Rights Commission members and DEA alliance members so that we can continue doing this level of community conversations. Uh, in terms of schools, uh, with a, a little bit of technical difficulty, we did get the SOI, uh, uploaded into the state mass school building authority website. I also wanted to let you know about two very important hires at central office for the schools. Uh, long-term employees, Angela Beck, our assistant superintendent, who has been employed for over thirty years, as well as Nancy Lysick, our human resource and finance manager, are retiring this month. I would like to acknowledge their dedication and commitment to our school district and wish them the very best as they enter this next chapter in their life. The school committee unanimously approved the hires of Philip Little Hale, business manager, and Lisa Marie Ipilido, pardon me if I botched her name, assistant superintendent, who will join, uh, central administration this month. I thought you would like to see their resume, so I attached them to my update. Uh, Parks Field Office at fifty Parker Street and, uh, some continuation potentially at Low Street. Neighborhood and City Services is review, is reviewing the potential site for a potential home for our Parks Department. KP Law has reviewed the extensive lease and the committee is reviewing commercial comps and other costs associated with this site. Um, and that review is continuing. We also had an interesting call last week with the attorney for the National Guard, who wanted to basically check in with us on, you know, what happened with the site. And we talked to them about the fact that, uh, DCAM would not let us do borings or air quality testing, which was absolutely critical in terms of our making a decision going forward. So they did give us permission to do the boring tests and the air quality, uh, which could lead to a lease agreement at, uh, fifty-seven Low Street. And, uh, we would like to proceed at least getting the borings and the air quality tests done so we have more information, uh, about the possibility of that particular site for Parks. Uh, Phillips Drive Neighborhood, you have the loan, loan order before you. Um, you have all been very actively involved in the complex issues that have been facing this neighborhood. Um, numerous site, uh, walks. We did a sidewalk recently with BSC. Uh, their complete plans to date are available at DPS if you have additional questions. Uh, the presentation that we did for the public was an overview, and I know some, um, deeper questions were brought up a few weeks ago by the council. So would encourage you to reach out to, uh, DPS and Diane Gagnon, our assistant engineer, who would be happy to answer any of your questions regarding those plans. You know, the neighborhood has suffered with drainage issues, flooding, um, in yards, homes, old inadequate structure, infrastructure, and poor quality roads for decades. We need to finally address these issues at, in this neighborhood, and I strongly encourage your support of that bond. Uh, Merrimack Street Line striping, uh, will begin Wednesday, um, oh, on, uh, six thirty at ten AM. Uh, the website says earlier than that, we wanted to wait till all the, uh, commuters got out and then all the roads will be blocked, uh, with big DPS vehicles to prevent people from driving over the, the lines that we just continually seem to have an issue with. Um, and then they will be moved as the paint dries. So I'm very excited that we're finally going to get Merrimack, uh, street painted. Uh, Merrimack River dredge, we ran into, uh, some problems, um, with districts signing off on the permits. Army Corps of Engineers, our contact, Mark Hebbel contacted me, uh, very concerned about how we move forward. Uh, you can see from my notes that essentially we had to step up at a new level in terms of being a non-federal supporting partner. And, uh, that will allow, uh, us to, um, join in the partnership agreement and allow a right of entry, uh, for the dredge materials that need to be placed on reservation terrace. There's a little more detail in my update that you can read and please reach out to me if you have additional questions about that. Uh, KP Law has been involved every step of the way in terms of reviewing these, um, you know, pretty comprehensive documents from the Army Corps of Engineers. And I'm going to wait on my last announcement because, um, Matt is still in negotiations with Boxford and once those negotiations are final, I will be happy to make a, uh, much broader announcement, uh, about where things stand for him. Anyway, I wish everyone, uh, safe and happy Fourth of July. Enjoy Independence Day and thank you.
Andy, Mary. Uh, I'm just going to take a moment to ask Councilor Vogel, who listens to us remotely, to respond. We have the air conditioning on. Can you still hear the broadcast, Councilor Vogel?
Um, somewhat. If it would be, it would be better if you projected more, um, but I can hear the councilors around the table and, uh, clerk, if you face the owl. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, clerk, um, I'm just here. I just have a quick question for the mayor. I assume, hopefully she's still out there. Has GDI? Oh, great. Thank you. Has GDI spoken to Sisaki to coordinate the, the bulkhead elevation with the park design? Or can they?
Yes, of course they can. Um, we actually had talked to them about that early on. Um, and I think that that's a, a really important piece that GEI and Sisaki have that conversation. So thank you, counselor.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments from council? Either in chambers or, um, online. Uh, there you go. Uh, move along to communication.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Three little minutes to January seventh. There are eight, uh, following eight applications are all headed to Public Safety. Uh, number thirty-two, the Newburyport Road Race on October seventeenth in Cashmere Park. Application thirty-three, movable sign Grand Trump on the corner of Senate Street to Water Street. Application thirty-four, Black Party and Virtual Street to Hill Street, seven thirty-one, um, two thousand twenty-one. Application thirty-five, Black Party Temple Street, between Fedo and Fair, eight fifteen, two thousand twenty-one. Application thirty-six, Black Party Dub Street, between Monroe and Nuremberg, eight seven twenty-one. Application thirty-seven, Black Party Cutters Court to Griffin Court, eight twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Application thirty-nine, the Yankee Open Lions, Lions Club Bed Race, eight five, two thousand twenty-one. Application forty, O'Connell Summer Fest, seven thirty to eight one, two thousand twenty-one. Communication three thirty-two, Phillips Drive Neighborhood Committee Letter, the Center Budget Finance. Communication three hundred and thirty-three, American Rescue Plan Act Aqua Funds, the Budget Finance. Communication three hundred and thirty-four, Crosswalk, Rossin Avenue, High Street, Highland Avenue, Neighborhood and City Services. Communication three hundred and thirty-five, Safety Review Rossin Ave Letter, Daniel Bless, again Neighborhood and City Services. Transfer one oh six, Live Staff five thousand to Argyle Main, same amount, the Budget Finance. Appointment two twenty, two fifty-five, Robert Hop, twenty-six Lime Street, planning board until January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Following items are removed from, uh, the respective committees, the consent agenda, Budget Finance. Transfer ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ordinance seventy-nine, transfers ninety-nine, one hundred, one oh one, one oh two, one three, one oh four, one oh five. Order two fifty-four, order two fifty-five. Public Safety, applications twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and twenty-three. Public Utilities, water sewer rates, order two fifty-seven. And that is the consent agenda of the season.
Was it all canceled? That's been called.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I'd like to remove application twenty-nine, consent agenda, please.
Motion to amend it? Second. Council Wallace is second.
I'm motion to.
Oh, the second, I have a new question.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Oh, let me.
Let me just hold that the second. Council Wallace, was it something to mind, move on to consent agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead. That is just a moment. Counselor Z, good check, taking her out of board. Council Wallace.
Motion to, uh, remove communication three thirty-four and three thirty-five, not the consent agenda.
Next, second. Flash second. Now, according to counsel, Z's motion, this is seconded by counsel's call. Discussion, I'm looking, seconded, consent agenda. There you go. All's in favor, we will take a roll call. It's the motion from the consent agenda as amended, which is meaning, I would get the application twenty-nine and communication three thirty-four and three thirty-five. Councilor Lane. Yes. Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel. Council Vogel?
Yes.
Um, Council Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan. Is that some, Councilor Agnewman is that some, Councilor Connell?
Yes.
Okay, so we can move on. Who's next? Next, we have. Four little minutes, is that right? That was already done. Um, we have the mayor's update. Motion received, the file.
Second.
Remove the second, discussion. There you go. Roll call. Roll call, received, the file. There's update. Councilor Lane. Yes. Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Okay. With the regular agenda, communications. We have, um, with application forty-one, Mr. President, the thirtieth annual walk against domestic violence, October third, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion to send to Public Safety, second.
Remove the seconded, any discussion? There you go. Roll call. Roll call, send application forty-one to Public Safety. Councilor Lane. Yes. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
And now, taking one to application thirty-eight, Firehouse Event, continued from our June seventeenth meeting. Um, I think everybody knows what this is about. I'm going to, um, with your indulgence, ask the director of the Firehouse Center to scan down the white dot and, uh, and let us get a little bit of information. Uh, let me advise you that, uh, Mary Ann Fancy had already said a few prime comments about the event and how it's been seen so far, maybe your perspective, the different needs to be enveloped in some ways, some new motion. Oh, yeah. Before you speak, do we have a motion on? Motion to.
Yeah.
Second. And with the second, council call. And as a discussion point, I'd say, who has the positive deposition to preempt our question to it?
Uh, well, thank you all again for taking the time to, to hear from the firehouse and thank you, Mary Ann, for speaking on our behalf beforehand. So, um, so far, we've had six successful performances. Uh, we've been very lucky to have the performances over there on Waterfront East. Um, you will, you obviously had an email earlier, or the, and the, earlier last week from, uh, Council Vogel with some despicable reading. with some despicable readings around the area, and as you could see in those readings, everything is well within a normal level, and we've spoken to multiple different butters who have said that when their windows are closed at night, since it's been so getting hot, their windows have been closed at night, they can't even hear what's going on right in front of them, which has been, which has been really nice. And I'm also happy to report that the, one of the women who was here a couple of weeks ago to speak about her dissatisfaction actually called us the other day, because we had some kids who were there breaking some styrofoam, and she called us to let us know what was going on, and she said the same thing, that even though, you know, it's not her favorite thing, it's not bothering her anywhere near as much as she was, as she thought it would be. Because with her windows closed, the air conditioner on, the TV on, she's not hearing anything. So, we're really happy, we're really happy with that. We've been happy with the, you know, the audience size, we've had anywhere between 80 to about 120 people that have come each night. They're still potted in their areas, the pots are a little closer than they were before, and we have our overall sound down at minus 10 decibels, which people know is quite a dramatic shift from what you would typically have something at. It's very directional, and I think, you know, there've been enthusiastic crowds that have enjoyed the shows, as well as several passerby that have also enjoyed the production. And we've spoken to each of them, let them know if they can come and see the show if they want. The Custom House had an event this past Friday, they were able to end a few minutes early, and there was no issue with sound, they are planning to do around the same thing this Friday. Again, they found no issue with the sound, as well as their wedding party that is coming out on July 3rd. They actually made a joke that they think they might be overpowering our sound. So, all in all, you know, we're really grateful for the community for being willing and open and working with us on all of this, and I'm really grateful to this council for approving us for the last couple of weeks, and I'm hopeful that at the end of tonight, we'll be able to be approved for the remaining four weeks. So, thank you for coming.
If you remain there, we're just a welcome to you, perhaps there are questions to be answered that are yet unanswered. Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Council President, two questions from last time. You were asked to explore the possibility of going to 6:30 start time, and then the second one, I'll just ask that one. I, for one, was expecting the Custom House to either send an email or something that said they were okay with Friday, Saturday coming up, so could you address either...
Sure, I'm happy to follow up with the Custom House and see if they'll be willing to send something to City Clerk that, City Clerk Jones. That he can distribute to the rest of the council. And I did speak to all several cast members, we have folks coming from Boston, folks that are coming from work that are barely making it for the 6:30 call time, so pushing it up that hour would make it difficult for the entire cast to move there. So, I did the due diligence, and I apologize that we weren't able to come to be able to move it up an hour.
Other questions from Councilors? Councilors online, I see Counselor Volker, Counselor Lane, and there are no questions for you? We can see that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Discussion from all Councilors. Counselor McCauley?
So, I would speak in favor of approving this the next three weeks. I would like an email from the Custom House on their two events on Friday and Saturday. I'm sure they can work that out, but they were concerned, I'm more concerned with the wedding than I am the Custom House event, they can look around that, and so, but I would be in favor of, you know, conditional providing we get that approved.
Hearing none, other Councilors? Speak, the permanent application is for us.
I believe it's four weeks.
Yeah?
Up until January 20th, October 25th?
I'm still a bit...
Yeah. Other comments, or if you have to say goodbye.
Yeah.
I see Counselor Lane's hands up, Counselor Lane?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted to share, I'm in support of this as well, as Mary Ann Clancy had pointed out, I was down there, and the noise was minimal, and it was actually a pretty cool vibe, so I'm definitely in favor of supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor, other Councilors? Seeing no additional hands, Counselor Lane, your hand is still up, you just speak your speech, please?
Yeah, I'll put it down.
Hearing no further discussion, we will give a roll call on the motion to approve this permit for the remainder of the month.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, have a great day. Next, we have my report. First meeting of appointments.
Right, Mr. President, I think we have polls from the consent agenda, Communications 334, 335.
Correct, I see you ready.
Motion to refer Communications 334, 335 collectively to public safety.
Second. And seconded by Counselor Tontar, discussion. Counselor Wallace?
Yeah, just want to summarize, we have met with TSEC Transportation Safety Advisory Committee about some concerns the neighbors have regarding traffic on Highland Ave, so it's a natural progression to take that into public safety. And I just, you know, if the chair of public safety is willing to do so, I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Very well. Other comments, Councilors? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to refer.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell? And Counselor Devlin? Counselor Song?
Yes.
Counselor Governor?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilors. We have some appointments.
We do, we have first reading, they are late files, which is watching the record agenda. First one is Appointment 256, Lawrence Murray, Marshall, 6/30/2026. And collectively, Appointment 257, Aaron Sheen, Two Rivers Street, Council on Aging. And Appointment 258, Nancy Elkon, quoted registrars until 3/31/2024.
But it's a little cancel, motion approved collectively?
Second.
And then discussion. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I would, unfortunately, I'd like to take 256 separately. But that's me.
I'll draw my motion, Counselor. I will draw my motion.
Draw my second.
And I'll motion to put the other two collectively, we can do that on its own. All right? So, the motion was to approve Appointment 257 and 258 collectively, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Motion to approve 257 and 258 appointments, Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
And motion passed. Is there another motion, we have one other appointment, name? Motion to approve public safety. Second. Moved in second to public safety, seconded by Counselor Devlin, I believe. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call and I can vote.
Appointment 256 going to public safety. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Those first three appointments, second reading appointments.
Appointment 250, Teresa Rooney, 7R Beacon Street, the COA until 5/31/2026. Appointment 256, Adam Armstrong, 5 Buck Street, the Harvard Commission, 4/1/2024. Appointment 253, Amir Abraham, 85 Prospect Street, the Human Rights Commission, until 6/30/2024.
Motion to approve on second reading collectively?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Tontar, I believe. Discussion? Seeing no hands in the air or hands in the chambers, we give the roll call.
Motion to approve Appointments 250, 252, and 253, Counselor Lane?
Yes.
McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Order?
Let me just catch.
Yep.
Any event, Order 250, I'm sorry, Order 258, Chapter 59, Section 5N, Veterans Property Tax Exemption.
Motion to take 258, 259, and 260 collectively?
For the record, 259, Chapter 59, Section 5K, same, 0260, Section 59, Section 5K.
Seven. Move in second, discussion, Counselor Connell?
Yeah, just a minute, the first, wait a minute, Order 258 would essentially do a vet, added veterans workoff, we have a senior workoff right now, veterans, if the council proves of this, veterans would be able to work actually 125 hours a year and receive $1,875 reduction in their property taxes. That's if the council accepts the exemptions. One exemption is that they would be allowed to do 125 hours instead of $100. And the second exemption is that veterans who are disabled be allowed to appoint someone who could volunteer in their path. So, that's that, and the second one would add those two exemptions to the senior workoff, right? And the third order, which is 260, that, what that would do is that would change the stipulation that the income limit be based on census data, and of course, census data, which I think I actually, I did, I apologize for that, the census data, of course, is, comes out in 10 years, in between those years are just estimates. So, in extent, I propose that we use the senior credit right off, and the state sets those amongst, and they have set that for single-family $61,000, for head of household $76,000, and for married temple father and daughter, $92,000. So, I hope that what we're finding to be this consideration, Counselor, has it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, President, discussion? Hearing none, we'll give a roll call.
It's a motion to refer orders 258, 259, and 260 to Budget Finance. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Next order?
Next order will be 261, which reads as follows, the city accepts a gratificated gift from the Climate League in the amount of $675 in support of the Axon Park and Ball Field Irrigation and Woodman Park Restaurants.
Motion to refer to Budget Finance, second. Moved in second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Roll call to refer to Budget Finance, Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Order 262 is accepting, with respect to accepting the ARPA grant, it is submitted by Counselor Tontar, probably too long to read, but here in Perkins Park, says the city report hereby accepts the grant from the American Rescue Plan Act 2021. It's ARPA, by the way, Corona virus local fiscal recovery fund.
Motion to refer to Budget Finance, second. Moved in second, to refer to Budget Finance, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
This is to refer Order 262, Budget Finance, Counselor Lane?
Yes.
McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
263?
263 is as follows, it's a late file with respect to revolving fund order that we see every year that's submitted, Counselor Z?
Motion to refer to Budget Finance, second. Moved in second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call on time.
Referring to 263 to Budget Finance, Counselor Z, I'm sorry, Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Order 264? Order 264 is also a late file, amending Rule 28 in Burton Park, including the term building commissioner in addition to building inspector, that needs to be sent to its appropriate committee under our rule of...
Motion to continue to July 12? Second. And the second, will be your question, McCauley? Roll call?
Roll call to continue Order 264 to the next meeting, which is July 12. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Just a moment of consultation, we have a recent application for the new walk against domestic violence. Was that the, do we have to...
No, we should not, but we can refresh my memory.
It's just not commuted, number 10, Application 41.
Yeah.
Sent to public safety.
If you send it to public safety, yeah, well, if you can build a medical... Counselor, do you think the public, that the, the, didn't the consent agenda two come out?
No.
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 No, the late file, Application 41.
Yeah, okay, the law is suspended, let's act on that right now, please. Application 41, which came to us, the first annual walk against domestic violence, hold on a second, this question. Is that just coming in?
Yeah.
We vote that?
Yes. Yes, that's just coming in, so that would, that would go to committee.
Public safety?
Yes, that's correct, okay.
Motion to send it to public safety?
Second. Roll call?
Let's move Application 41 to public safety, first and second, and... Counselor Lane?
Yes.
McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
I thought that was the program, you know, that was...
No.
Orders? 277?
Order seventy seven is a second reading of the NRMAC street parking regulations, um, in Burton Park, that, uh, there's no person parking during pre-scheduled limited events at the lower access and common fields vote on, the northern side from Tom Brady to Oak Street, and the southern side from Oak for distance, approximately one hundred fifty.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. Moving in second. Discussion. On second reading, vote call. Okay. Vote call for approval of ordinance seventy seven, second reading. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Order taken. Order taken two is the first introduction of, and ordinance establishing the American Rescue Act Stabilization Fund, amending chapter two, administration, our four finance, uh, fund is broken up, uh, code section two dash three ninety six. It's jointly submitted, Council McCauley and Z.
Motion to send the budget finance, second.
Moving in second. The budget finance, discussion. Seeing no hands, vote call. This is to refer, uh, ordinance eighty two to budget finance. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Order taken. Order taken three is the first introduction. It is an ordinance to amend provisions of the Mickey Perkins only ones pertaining to wind energy facilities and towers along IMAC five. Essentially, uh, amending the use table. Submitted Council of Connell.
Motion for a.
Second. Moving in. Did I hear a second? Second. Discussion. Let's play it back. Vote call. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
And we're on the other end, and, uh, we have one item we'd like to take out of order, uh, courtesy to the chair. Planning development.
Motion to waive the rules and bring out appointment two fifty four.
Second. Moving in second. Discussion. Questions, comments, discussion. There you go. Vote call. Vote call on waiving the rules to take out appointment two fifty four. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Is there a motion on the point?
Motion to approve appointment two fifty.
Second. Moving in second. Discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, counsel.
All right, so everyone remembers, uh, last Tuesday night, we were thinking that we needed to approve somebody for the building inspector position, uh, last week, but we motioned to put it into our committee. We had our committee meeting tonight. Uh, Counselor Wallace and I got to talk to Mr. Morel. He has, uh, been in the family business for twenty one years. Uh, last fifteen, uh, he's been working as the construction superintendent for G and R Construction. Asked why he wanted to leave the family business. He said he was tired, tired of working the seven days a week and was ready to start a family, so appreciated the honesty there. Uh, he has, uh, been, uh, on both sides of the building inspector piece of the puzzle. He has been working up through the ranks of the company, has been a carpet reformer all the way up to the construction superintendent. He has worked on, uh, historical buildings, specifically the Needham, uh, Port, you know, Needham Town Hall Building. He is, uh, well versed in ADA compliance requirements. Uh, we actually had the chair of the planning, uh, not sorry, we had the chair of the Disabilities Commission speak in favor of him. Had nothing but good things to say about his, uh, support of his and willingness to work for the committee. He's, uh, been working with our contractors for the last three months. He actually got hired in on week fifth and passed his test a few weeks ago. So understandably so, we want to get him hired and into the position officially so he can get to work and thank you for letting us do this first thing in the morning to get us first thing in the morning so he can continue working. So, great person. I think he'll be a good person for the job and the board to be all approving his appointment.
Was there committee recognition?
Yes, committee voted two zero and approved these appointments.
Thank you. Uh, for the discussion, it's a point. No questions, bud? Very well. Motion for vote call. Is our motion to approve appointment two fifty four. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Congratulations. Vote on the board.
Thank you.
You go home. You should go home. Just don't shut the door. Okay. Counselor Devlin. Uh, was there anything else from, uh, Counsel McCauley?
Uh, in, in that same manner, um, uh, I would ask that we move up, uh, a couple items to public safety. We've got some folks here waiting, um, uh, through there, and, uh, most of them will be collected anyway, so.
Before we do that, I just want to ask Counselor Shan, is there anything else something you have to mention tonight?
Yeah, nothing else to add.
Very well, then. If there are any objections, we have the prerogative of the chair. We'll take, um, question calls, committee, up right now. Counselor call.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, collectively do, uh, application twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. Uh, motion to approve.
Second. Moving in second. Discussion.
Uh, vote call. Uh, at public safety, we reviewed these applications. Uh, they were complete. They answered all the questions. We asked everyone to give their two or five minute, uh, speech as to what it was and their validation. Uh, these folks are repeatable. Block party, uh, has been ongoing. It was, uh, for multiple years. Stopped because of COVID, but now they want to get back to it. Uh, road race is going five K instead of the ten miler because they, uh, they're, they're just not ready like the rest of us. They're scrambling to get that done. And the chocolate, to our, who does love chocolate. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the members? There you go. Vote call. Motion to approve applications twenty five, twenty six, and twenty seven. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Uh, Counsel McCauley.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, motion for application twenty three, moving wall near proceeding file.
Second. File. Discussion.
Yeah, uh, recent being is they withdrew the application. It's moving to the.
Further discussion. There you go. Vote call. Motion to review proceeding filed, application twenty three. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Uh, I move to approve, uh, application thirty, Fifty's Car Show.
Second. Moving in second. Moving to approve. Discussion.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, the, uh, parklets have caused some, uh, consternation in, uh, rolling up the car show. Uh, Chamber has been adept at moving around, uh, those, uh, different areas. Uh, they've also secured the, uh, New Republic Bank, uh, rare, um, parking lot to be able to do that. Uh, some of the questions, uh, from the committee, where have they worked with the butters of Sullivanville? The answer is no, but the answer is now yes. Uh, they found, uh, very accommodating, uh, neighbors. Um, the bank was looking for the city to put up their, um, uh, parking for their employees while they set the stage of the show. Uh, we tried to accommodate for the city, uh, but as Counsel Lane motioned to the, uh, they went to the IC and they were able to accommodate them in the back building. So, uh, the point here is that, uh, it is still a fluid type of application as we're all struggling, uh, to get our arms around how we get a grip on the pandemic and reopen. Uh, I think the Chamber has done a nice job. They've accommodated, uh, all of the questions we asked. They have signatures, uh, from the, uh, public safety officials. They have plans and alternative plans, uh, along the way. They've planned around, uh, the various, uh, parklets, especially in Pleasant Street, uh, and, and, uh, on, uh, Lower State Street as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We all have done a little bit of flexibility in. But as of this future. Vote call. This is the motion to approve the Fifty's Car Show application thirty. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
And Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Okay, anything else, Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, motion to approve, uh, application twenty eight. My, I should have done that collectively. Uh, the application was complete. It's, uh, great new report about ovarian cancer association, five K walk, ride, no street closures, uh, etc.
Second. Moving in second. Discussion. We got for one, we need it. Vote call. This is a motion to approve application twenty eight. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counsel call. Uh, that's one, application thirty one, Yankee Homecoming, uh, July thirty first, Long State, uh, uh, same basic pattern, uh, same folks.
They have all their signatures in place. There will be some differences. The parade will stop at State Street, uh, instead of continuing all the way down. Uh, Brew Fest will be in Cashman, uh, and, uh, they're accommodating, um, you know, for different types of crowds, but they're giving preferences to local businesses, uh, same structure, same organization, same, uh, benefits, same fireworks. Thank you.
Further discussion. Counsel Z.
Um, I just have a couple quick questions. One is, the year before COVID, we had started making an effort at putting these events on the city calendar so that we could see the global view of how many weekends. So I wanted to ask the clerk through the chair, can, can we do that as we get back into this? I think Tricia, the assistant city clerk, was putting all these on, and I'm trying to write down the dates, be virtually that. Remember several years ago, we tried to write how many events we were doing to warrant overwhelming downtown. I don't think we're at risk of that here, and it's not specific to this event. The second question I had was just under location, on this event in particular, and the yield is, it says locations waterfront parks, so are they, this is going to the waterfront trust as well?
Yes.
Is that? Okay. Those are my two questions.
Okay, first question, the clerk.
Yeah, in response, um, Counsel Z, would you prefer a breakdown of the Yankee Homecoming events? Uh, I'm not sure we have all of them.
I just didn't know when else to ask this, but I'm actually just looking for the global, all the events go on a calendar. I think they were putting them on the other calendar on the city website. And it was helpful, we were able to go and see if there were already, say, three other days when we were approving these. So now we're getting into the heavy. It'd be nice to see the volume, that's all. So it's not about Yankee Homecoming in particular, it's general.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President.
All right, uh, so we have motion, seconded and discussed, the application thirty one, vote call.
Moving seconded, bud. Motion to approve Yankee Homecoming, application thirty one. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
And Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel President. I, I have nothing else, uh, further. Thank you for accommodating.
Thank you. Uh, so let's go back to, uh, ordinary order of justice. That way, budget and finance is the next committee that's P L, and it's, I've been assured that it'll be great.
That is a lie. Uh, let's start off with a, uh, motion to approve transfer ninety seven, which is sixty five, two sixty, uh, and highways, you like fifty, snow and ice, waiver expenses in the same amount.
Second. Moving in second by Counsel Tontar. Counsel Z.
I may just stand for the rest of the night. So, um, this is a fairly straightforward, um, transfer. It might be our most straightforward one of the night. Remove old snow and ice. This is what it cost this past winter, and, uh, the committee had one absence, so we have two to zero to vote.
Discussion. Seeing no hands, vote call. Vote call to approve transfer ninety seven. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
And Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Anything else, bud?
Oh, yes, Mr. President. Thank you. Uh, motion to, um, I, I wanted to transfer ninety eight, Mr. President, which has a series of different items. We'll have to take them separately, if I may. So I'll start off with the motion to approve, um, the building records reorganization, BD zero zero one, twenty two thousand five hundred. And I just want to say that in the packet, the, the first page shows them by order of their source, but if you continue on to the next page, you will see them ordered by department, source, but if you continue on to the next page, you will see them ordered by department, and that's the order we're going to follow because it may be more sentence and more logical. So that's why building is first.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. President. Yep, so this is a building records reorganization, as we were told the committee by the acting building commissioner. Documents are currently stored in a by date instead of by address, and so it's become a challenge to locate records when somebody comes in and says, what's the story with X, Y, Z address? They're going through years rather than going to a folder for that address. So that's why they are asking for this 22,500. It was asked in committee, why can't we do this electronically and scan everything? And the response was that this would be the first step, and then once the records were organized paperwise, then hopefully in the future, they could be digitized and they could be searched by a variety of mechanisms. The committee voted 3 to 0 to you to recommend.
Then further discussion?
Well called. To approve BD 001. Council Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
And Council Devon.
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, is to approve DPS Highway. The total amount is $600,000 against HW 002 and HW 003, coming from free cash primarily as well as a mix of other accounts as indicated in the paper. So, Mr. President, we met on this in two different meetings. Our first one was on June 10th, and then we met again about it on June 21st. This is a transfer to help get us to the $2 million goal of spending on roadways. I don't know that there was any pushback in committee about spending on roadways. Where there was concern was requesting some detail as far as, A, what does 600 go to and when, as well as a little bit of a historical look back at what the last several years have been have yielded for roadway work, sources of funding, how much. We did receive an email today. I forwarded to you as fast as I could relative to when I got it. That's the information that's made available in our first meeting. There was a recommendation to approve that was voted on 3 to 0, but in our meeting on June 21st, we still hadn't received that information, so the motion has changed to bring it to you with no recommendation. If I may, as the chair, offer an editorial note. If you're not bound by the timeline of free cash, which we'll talk about tonight, this probably would have stayed in committee. Maybe we'll find out it should have stayed in committee, but here we are. We didn't want to deny the council the opportunity to discuss it. And so the vote to bring it to you with no recommendation was 3 to 0. So we backed off on the substance there, and others maybe we should speak to it, myself included, after. Thank you.
All right, we don't have any recommendation, however, we have an added course. Is there any one left in question or like to comment on this? Council Devon, that's your hand. What's up with that?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I'm a member of budget and finance, and I did ask. I was not the one who asked for it, but for the detail coming out of it, but I have to say, I was somewhat disappointed with the information we got this afternoon. You know, we had asked for a simple breakdown of, the request was to finish some projects that were in motion, and we were told on the 10th that it would happen the next day because they had an active list. On the 21st, we didn't have it, and then today, we finally just got a list. And that list included 375 for Columbus, 492 for Arlington, 290 for Boardman, and then some historicals. However, the application itself talks about reappropriation to finish the sidewalk at the North Mall. Nowhere in the email did it talk about the North Mall and sidewalk. I would be okay with it if it included restoring the sidewalk on Myrtle Street, but that's not in this email either. So what we have is we have two new streets and one that isn't going to get paved until April or May of next year for a list that, you know, was ready to go on June 10th. And yet, we still don't have anything concrete that we could say equals $600,000. I'm troubled by this, you know, circular discussion we have about trying to collect information. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? I don't know if this is proven or blackish, long or not.
Here, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure what question you wanted.
There was a comment about the process itself. Was there something the administrative level represent? I see Mr. Man, and he's also with us tonight, but I'm not sure this is in his. Which clerk?
Council Wallace.
Thank you. Council Wallace?
Thank you, Council President. I concur with the Council from Ward 5. I'm still a bit confused what money is supposed to be for, and hopefully Mr. Cooper can clarify it for us, but I heard some of it was from Merrimack, and then just emailed today, said Boardman, which was the first time I'd heard that. So the process concerns me a little bit that we're hearing this today, the public hasn't seen this information. Tomorrow and the next day, the councilors are meeting with beta engineering to go over the road plan, but the public hasn't seen that either. So it's happening very, very fast, and of course, I support roads. We want to spend money. Columbus Ave has been waiting. Arlington Street is on the list. Those are all Ward 4, but we want to make sure we do it right and know what the scope is and just have the proper information to vote so that it's fair for all residents. So I welcome any explanation, further explanation about these funds. Thank you.
Any other questions on the table first? I did wish to respond to your name. If you were going to ask, or if you have questions, we have to add it to the question 920.
I guess I have a question as much as a comment. So again, the counselor from Ward 4 alluded to the fact that tomorrow and the next day, we're meeting to discuss the beta study, and we have some information on it, but and the reference in the email that we got today said Columbus, Arlington, and Boardman were being chosen based on the beta study. But we don't have any reference to what the beta study means because we're going to be discussing it tomorrow and the next day. So it seems to look backwards. And again, we're, I'm troubled because I want to say no to any spending. I can empirically tell you, part of my running route is Columbus Avenue. It is one of the worst streets that we have in the city, hands down. Boardman and Arlington, I drove down Arlington, remember that, because I know people who live there. Empirically, just looking at them, they're not as bad as some of the other streets. And so if you look at the beta spreadsheet we got, it's very hard to determine why those two were where they were. And so we need to know that, because we need to justify it to people. So I guess that's my comment, or that question, other than how it was chosen, but I'm hoping that we're not that tomorrow.
Under. Mr. Collins, please.
Sure, I guess to clarify, I think there was misinformation spoken in the workshop. So the funding that we're looking for does not cover the work at Merrimack Street. That work is funded. What our intention was with this transfer request is to continue down this pathway of $2 million, a minimum of $2 million of road and sidewalk work every fiscal year. And fortunately, one of the funding sources the council provided was that bonding option. But since we had a healthy amount of free cash, we thought it made the most sense to spend the cash we had now and devote that towards road and sidewalk construction this year. You have a list of what we gave to you. It's a straight through list that's on the beta plan. I sense a frustration, the councilors, the beta plan was only recently given to you. We were doing, you know, but I think we, once we have those, once we have those meetings, you can understand how data assembled that road, roadway improvement plan. You know, I could just say that there's more work than within two, much, you know, essentially amount of work that needs to be done in the city that's not in the five-year plan. But we can have data basically explain how that plan is made, because they're the ones that used the rattle and I guess to produce. When we did submit this plan back in May 24th, we were still finishing up Merrimack Street. We were still finalizing those numbers of what we wanted to do outside of what the streets are. We can all argue which streets will first, it can come, because there'll never be enough money to do to do all the streets and do all the work. We can discuss that over time. What we'd like to do is continue down this pathway of $2 million of sidewalk and road destruction every year. We feel that using $600,000 of free cash is a good way of continuing this process. Though, continue having our bonding capacity, and we can reassess how we fund it in year 2004. Thank you.
Council Z, I believe it's first. Will you, Council Collins, all over?
Thank you.
That's all.
Yes, just a quick question. So the chapter 90 money for FY 2022 and the sidewalk money that we just passed, the 33,000 in the operating budget, has that been spent, or can we start using that money towards these projects?
Yes, we could. We can. It hasn't been spent, and we can use it.
Thank you. Council Z, do you want to go there?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So like my colleagues, obviously, it'd be insane to oppose roadway spending, and it's what we spend so much time on, but you have to admit, the email is perplexing. So there's a $600,000 request, and then you, you know, the first thing I did anyways was try to add the numbers and make sense of it, and quite bluntly, they don't add up. So you're asking for 600, and then we know that the chapter 90 allocation is about 500, and then we know, because we just passed the budget, that there's about 375. If we add all that up, just to use round numbers, you're talking about a million and a half. And so, but then you add up the work that's proposed here, and you only come up just over a million dollars. So you've got another 400. So here are some of the questions it begs. Why would we stop if we have more money? If we've got another 300, 400,000 of slack, why don't we use it? That's one question. The second question is looking historically at the last couple of years, and I was even more perplexed because I add up those numbers and I get 2.5 million dollars spent, which is great. We love spending on roads. But to me, we were often told the story that we saved up two years of chapter 90 money, and that's how we were able to do Merrimack. But again, none of these numbers add up to me and makes sense because even if you saved up two years of chapter 90 at 500, so I'm even more fundamental than questioning which roads we're doing. I don't see any roads in Ward 1, but I'm letting that go for the moment. What I have, what I, what I think is that this is symptomatic of a disease. The problem is we're not doing things at the right time during the year. We have a construction season that runs right across the fiscal year line, and we're always trying to plan the party in the middle of the party. So now it's July, it's June 28th, we're bumping up against the free cash deadline, trying to plan for a construction season that we're in the middle of. So I believe we need to pass this tonight so we can continue forward, but we're going to have to condition it in some way that we can get an actual plan that makes sense just so that I can get my heartburn to go down from numbers that don't even come close to adding up to one another. And then in the future, starting the next year, this has to change. We should be doing this free cash transfer in November as soon as it frees up so that they can plan for a calendar year and encumber funds to be used across that time stamp. So I'm frustrated, and you know, the last thing I want to say is that I know we haven't all studied the beta report, but this, this proves to me, and the beta report proves to me that even $2 million is not enough. If anybody looked at this list and said, wow, residents are really going to feel this, they're not. In my word, this still wouldn't be felt. And next year, when I look at the beta plan, I have like one street. So this is, it's not enough. It's just not enough. We have to keep doing more. Thank you.
Council Devon?
Right, I'm not looking to argue this ad nauseam, that's not what I'm trying to do, but we do need to discuss it because we need to understand it so that we can discuss it with residents who come to us and say, Jones Road or Jones Drive, why is my road allegedly hasn't been paved in 50 years? Why is my road not getting done? Let me give you an example. When you look at the beta spreadsheet, it has Boardman, it said, let's start with Arlington. Road service rating, 28. General condition, very poor. Sewer rating, 1. Water rating, 3. I'm assuming it's 1 to 3. 3 would be, I don't actually know what it means, but yeah, I know there's some from our last meeting of beta, there's a connection between sewer and the water rating and the road surface. So just because you have the worst road surface doesn't necessarily mean you're the best candidate to be redone. But this one, Arlington, looks pretty poor. I see why, I understand why it's at the top of the list. But when you look at Columbus, all of those things are blank. The road service, the road service, service rating is blank. The water sewer rating is blank. So there's not even anything there for us to judge other than the fact that I run on Columbus Ave and almost killed myself in puddles and our biggest craters. But that Columbus, to me, I've been on Arlington, seems a lot worse, but there are no rankings there. So that's the problem. You know, I'd be okay with saying, yes, we're putting $600,000 of free cash to some roads. Of course, we want the roads done, but we don't, I mean, it just, it's hard to say we want to put it to these specific rates.
Very well. I see the mayor has raised your hand, and I'd like to recognize you now to respond to some of your questions. We've got a number of questions for them. Mayor Holiday, would you like to speak there?
Thank you. I appreciate that, Council President. I want to address specifically Columbus Ave, and the reason Columbus isn't on the beta plan is because it had been identified for a major infrastructure upgrade prior to the road work done. And unfortunately, the contractor that was the low bid didn't perform last spring. We had to rebid the contract. We just recently went out there. I was with a counselor from Ward 4 and met with the residents, met with the contractor, and they've, they have to put a whole new water line in. They've put above ground, you'll see that they have put a temporary line in, and the work is finally starting. The residents are pleased. It was delayed, you know, for multiple reasons, but all of this infrastructure work has to happen first, and then the road will be fine. We're also doing sidewalks. So Columbus is not on the list because the plan is underway. It has already been funded.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recognize Mr. Cooper, and then I have several councilors who have given me a signal most correctly to be clean slate actions coming.
Sure. I actually, oh, one thing I want to clarify, one thing I first said, I'll say I'm excited about our workshops tomorrow. It sounded like we were reviewing the plan, a lot of the work through those, and fortunately, we put those together. But I do want to clarify, the email I sent this morning was missing the sidewalk at the North Mall. So that was an error on my, on my part, so that is included in the work to be dealt with.
Thank you. Council Tucker?
I was just going to mention that I imagine that the reason we're specified in Columbus, that was at the start, two years ago. It's been a long, long process. So, did they have some gas? I can't.
They had gas a couple of years ago.
They did, yeah. I mean, yeah, so it could, everything. Just getting to the road.
Columbus, the other street.
Well, because they're not done for Los Angeles. It was pretty good.
Uh, Council, I thought, and Council Z.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to amend that the transfer is conditioned upon submission of detailed plans for any project prior to its start. And detailed plans would include things like estimates, timelines, drawings, signage, striking plans dependent upon, you know, will rely on DPS to what, how specific it needs to be for that project. But that is a formal amendment. So in other words, what I'm offering is we will encumber the funds so we can avoid the free cash challenges that may, that may come up, but that the money isn't going to actually be extended, essentially escrow, until we can be presented and say, well, in Columbus, here's what it looks like, similar to what we've done recently with a variety, actually, different things to public safety, which I think has been a process that's been evolving well.
So you wish to amend your previous motion?
Correct.
So, so you talked through the question, accept that amendment?
Well, I'd take a second so that, you know.
Is your second?
Uh, second.
So we have amendment for the council. How about on the amendment? Council Wallace?
I would actually like to amend the amendment to break it up per project. So I would like to first offer that amendment for Columbus Ave, because I agree that that is one that we know was slated to be done, and that has been for years. I'd like to start, you know, per project. That's it.
Is that a amendment to the sponsor of the?
Yes.
And, uh, Council Devon?
I was just kind of querying, do we need to do it on Columbus? Does it work for Columbus if it has already been two years in the making? And I would defer to your prepared piece.
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes, I would say it does matter because we want to make sure that we do have plans. As a board for council, I don't know the scope of Columbus's app. I know there's been a water line, but I don't know how far the sidewalks are going up, how far the street is. And I think it's very important, if we're going to commit to this money, that we put the thought into it, do the design. It can be, you know, it doesn't have to be an incredibly detailed design, but we have in-house staff that can do it, so that we're on the same page going forward with the project. We can get cost estimated at a time, and it just helps with, you know, issues down the road. So I think, I think it's a fair ask to say, look, if this is city council money, we want to see a plan. And I think that's something we're going to be seeing as we move forward, because it's kind of a new, a new era here. We've got the beta plan, we're using this much free cash, and we started through councilors saying they want to start seeing more plans. So I think it's a fair exchange for Columbus.
Mr. Cooper, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I just want to mention that there was a public meeting held about a month ago for Columbus Street residents. So I appreciate the councilor's interest in learning about the actual projects, but But if there's a way to, to amend or provide some sort of check and balance, it doesn't, you know. I think there's some things in process that are already on the way. We too also, you know, value, you know, the importance of public process for the tax pickings. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the councilor, Councilor Z.
Just curious, if we're appointing these plans, is it the intent to bring it into city council? Are we approved of these plans?
Is there a question? Please sponsor here as well.
Yes, I would. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that that's the evolution we've seen. So on Merrimack, for example, we brought a striping plan in and we approved it. And with that, there were some parking changes and so forth. Can't say it's the favorite thing that I want to do, but at the same time, given that we can't get numbers that add up square, I think that we need more oversight and it makes sense to do it. As far as things that are in flight, if they're in flight, hopefully there was already a plan drawn up. I mean, we can't just go out and pave the street and then expect it to come out perfectly and not end up like High Street. I mean, it's frustrating, but I don't know how to wrap our heads around it. And I'm trying to find a moderate solution here to allow us to move forward on this, rather than getting the money locked up until November. And this seems to be a balance point where there's at least every roadway project but for patching should have some basic plan. Nobody's saying it has to be a full-blown $200,000 study, but we do have an engineering department. Shortly, they can draw and say, these are the bounds of the project. This is the locus. Here's where the curbing is going to go. Here, just basic things like that. I think it's minutes and money well spent to avoid the challenges on the backside.
Councilor Z and the other.
I mean, okay, this plan comes into city council. Boerman Streets, one way, doesn't require striping. I mean, that's, I'm just sort of trying to figure out, so we're going to get a plan in July? And then we don't meet again till August? That's who we approve this? Is that the process we're looking at here?
Absolutely.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't see a better way to solve it for this year. Again, in my ideal world, this transfer, it's November and it's snowing outside. And we're talking about the following construction season. But here we are, we have $600,000 in front of us now. Because again, we're having the party and planning it at the same time. I'm open to other suggestions. I don't want to put the city council in a position, or DPS frankly for that matter. But I'm just not, how else do we solve this problem? We had, we had a show on waterfront east. What did we do? We gave a little bit of room, we saw how things went, and then we resolved it. And that's kind of what I'm asking for here as well. To me, if those plans are truly in flight, where was the plan behind them in the first place? Were we just going out there milling them and then dumping the pavement on and then saying, gosh, I don't know how we ended up putting the lines in the wrong place? Or why is the curbing only one inch off the, off the, off the pavement and all these other challenges that come up?
Mr. Coogan?
Well, I, I think Merrimack Street was a good example of process. There are no plans of Merrimack Street per se. There's a striping plan. But that striping plan was not done with a stamp, with a, with a survey, street, entire roadway in Merrimack Street. There was a portion of it that was, that was, that was focused upon. That, that, that was planned. And I think there was appropriate because we were changing the striding and layout of the road. And that's clear in the, in the board and the city board, I don't know the board, it's aware of this. And the city council does have some. So I think that process really. But prior to that, prior to the striping, we did, we do have project managers, we do have DPS. We do door-to-door flyering. We look at all the curb reveals, we look at all the crosswalks, we work with every single property owner. And we have all public meetings and notices like that. Like, that's the process that we worked. I would hate to, I would hate to legislate based on High Street. I think High Street was, we all admit that, that there was lots of mistakes there. But there, there was no plan that the city council did approve that would change the fact that the contractor did. Their own issue at those points. So I, I just, I, I just want to caution, I mean, there, I will, I, I, someone will use the process. If there's, if there's a different way of doing this process. We have streets that are individual wards. If we want to have board meetings, if we want to walk the street with our city engineer, our chief engineer, our city counselor, our paving contractor, our sidewalk contractor, we could walk down there. There are some trouble spots. We can do some hand sketches here and there, some curb reveals here, some brickwork there, driveway approaches here. I think that's it, that's a more efficient process of doing it. Otherwise, we are hiring an engineer to do a survey, to complete a plan, and then, and then timing wise. We want to spend this money this year. We want to get started in all these projects. And we feel like we're ready to go. So, and I, I think there's process for the next year. But I, I don't want to overprocess, overprocess this process. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Wallace?
I just got to say, roads are designed by engineers. They get a special stamp to, to design roads. We have a very talented engineering department. They, I've designed roads. I know how much it takes to put lines on a plan. And I lived through Merrimack Street for three years and looked at all the lost opportunities that we had on that. And I would say that process didn't work. If we would have done a plan, we would have more crosswalks. We probably would have already had traffic coming in there. Because it's all about where you set your curb. Our engineering department could have put it on a plan in a few days. And then you have a public process. So when you start constructing, you don't have everybody calling you, which is what happened on Merrimack Street. Or you don't have sidewalks that are put in once and then ripped out and put in a second time, which happened on parts of Merrimack Street. So I've, you know, with my experience and what I've seen in Newbury Court, it's kind of a no-brainer not to do a plan. It's not that much effort and it just gets you where you need to be.
Thank you. I'm trying to direct the question on this issue, because I did count some problems there.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor President. I, I think the, the breadth of this conversation has gone a little wider than we wanted to, right? In, in from my perspective. The request is for $600,000 to finish the roads, right? And I think we all admit that the email we got was not the best effort that we should, we should have gotten, right? $600,000 to finish some projects, done nowhere in the discussions on the 10th to the 21st. The debated discussion come up, other than us asking where we were with the beta discussion, right? And so I, I think it's a bit cat and mouse here that says, oh, we have a beta, we have a list of beta streets that we want to work on. And because we really, at the time, we really didn't. And so when the request came in, it was to finish some projects, to start some new ones, to keep them all, you know, the way that we've been doing things along with. These aren't, these weren't then new projects. And that was clear in the testimony we took in those, in those events, right? So, you know, in, in, instead of a, a list and a breakdown of, you know, what it's going to look like on, you know, Arlington Street as we project forward, that, that's a discussion for tomorrow and Wednesday. When, when we look at beta and we say, okay, now that you picked it, now that you think, you targeted these, how do you get it, right? You know, how do you engineer it? How do you design it? How do you build for volume to be able? But that's a discussion for the next couple of days. But this discussion is, is, is there's a request for $600,000 walls to finish streets, and we still don't know what they are. We, we, you know, we, we got, I think we got the wrong list. I would like to see a new list that has the sidewalk for the Knott, the replacement, Murdock Street sidewalk, the council board in on 11 and 0. I would like to see those projects finished, as was part of the testimony that was taken on both the 10th and the 21st in these discussions. And I will read the law. For this is the administration's application, this is what they wrote about. A portion of the annual 2 million committed for roadway and sidewalk improvements includes reappropriation from NHS exterior work work project to do the sidewalk in front of Knott. Nowhere in there does it say, beta, we'll take a few off beta here, we'll shuffle some beta over there, and we'll, you know, come up with a plan to do, none of it, right? And the testimony in the follow-up was that we had a list of projects that were shovel-ready, that we're ready to go, and we don't have. So, you know, I, 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 I do want to spend money. I do want to give the $600,000. But my condition, if, if we can amend that with us to, yeah, we want specific names of what we're going to finish with the $600,000 as well, right? So something that could say.
Thank you.
For a point of clarification, maybe for me, only the email on the floor, I'm hoping we have emotional proof. I'm going to have emotional amend, first and seconded, that establish the conditions that detailed plans are presented to the council prior to the start of each project. Am I correct? And I'm a little unsure about Columbus Ave because Columbus Ave is obviously not really the start.
Councilor Wallace, can you help us?
Sure, sure. Columbus Ave water line replacement project has been started. The paving project is separate. So the water line is contracted, probably paid through the water funds. The painting piece, I believe, is not even going to happen till next year. And that's what the mayor alluded to in the resident meeting we had a few weeks ago. So actually, I have a quick question, if I may, to.
Let's see if there's some clarity.
Okay. If that makes sense. So I, I would, as far as Columbus, there is work to be done. I would just like more information on what are we doing on Columbus. I would like to see a plan.
And Dr. Cross, the council, I could be a little down to the weeds on specific projects here. But it might help us move along tonight if we act on things that are kind of broadly within our purview. And after the beta meeting, then perhaps some of these questions will have been answered. I suspect that some of our questions, and we all have, will be answered during the beta meeting. I hope that's the case. And we've all been waiting for those to play some part. Sorry for the interruption. I, Councilor Tom, or Councilor Z?
Yeah, then actually, first I have a point of order.
Yes.
We have an amendment to an amendment.
Yes.
Was it accepted at the front? I don't believe it was. All right, so we just have an amendment. And amendment is, the question I have is, what is a detailed plan? And who's, who's the plan going to go to? That's the first question I have. The, my concern is that even, even if we appropriate these funds, my concern is that we might slow down this whole process. Depending on what you mean by detail. I don't know if we really can pass it through. Perhaps you'd ask, you know, highway department before us. Maybe that's a conversation we have with engineers. I, you know, I agree with a lot of the sentiment. I looked at the five years of paving, the cell line in the beta. I have no idea, all right, what the criteria are. I'm hoping to learn that tomorrow and Wednesday. But primarily, I, I want this money to be allocated. So out there, working over the next year. And I mean, I mean, we've had many years in the past where money is allocated in one fiscal year and doesn't get spent until a second or even a third year later, right? And I understand the frustration, but we haven't investigated why that's the case, right? We may be asking for a level of decision that is not possible. So again, plans, yes, but the level of detail and who it goes to, I think we need the answer. Otherwise, we're going to stop this whole process.
Councilor Z? I'll yield to Councilor Volvo if it's spoken yet. I see it's just popped up. Councilor Volvo, thank you. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilor Z. As I'm listening to this with a little bit of high volume on my speaker to get it all, I, I feel the same way. I'm, I'm concerned about slowing down the process considerably. And I agree with the, the councilor at large about, you know, what is the level of detail that we're looking for. And again, I also share the sentiment. I think that we need to understand what we're spending money on. But I would like to see about, you know, if we can move this question to where we allocate the funds and then we sit, we go back and we say, okay, what are we doing? And get, get that as the process goes along. And then streamline the process for, you know, years future. But I think right now, we're frustrating not only ourselves, but we're frustrating the whole process by, by, by digging in this way. So I, I would like to see us get on with it. And as the councilor president, Protem suggested, let's take care of what we can take care of without these, what I consider to be a little bit out of the scope of what we should be talking about in terms of allocating dollars and cents to get these, some of these streets paved this year. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor Z?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to respond to the questions and make a few comments. So first of all, what is a plan? The answer is, it's better not to define what a plan is. It is incumbent upon DPS to bring us a plan with irrelevant details. If it's a mill and overlay, take a piece of paper, draw a picture of the street, write mill and overlay. Who does it go to? It goes to the city council. The completeness of the application, the acceptability of the application resides with the city council. If you bring us Merrimack Street and we're going to say we're going to pave it, we just found out that that is not a good enough plan. And that's what 11 of us, or ultimately six of us was deciding, when is the plan enough? I don't need to have a 300,000, this is, I think, the bigger problem in the city. We only do $10 million projects or we do ad hoc junk. There has to be somewhere in the middle where a project has some level of planning. I'll give you an example. The at-large councilor posed a question, stood with me in a Marches Hill meeting just a few days ago with neighbors. And all of a sudden, we were going to do cobbles in the middle of the street. We were going to change where the striping is. And I was asked, what do you think? And I said, can you just show me something on a piece of paper so that everybody's on the same page? Assistant city engineer stood at the meeting and said, yes, I can draw that. How long do you think it'll take? Probably a couple of weeks. Doesn't mean there's going to be a transfer before us tomorrow for $200,000 for a plan. So what constitutes a plan? Rather than writing into my condition, you know, here's what a plan is, it has to include these things. I'm just saying, come in and show us what you think is appropriate commensurate with the level of detail that project demands. And the council will decide. Very similarly, we just spent half an hour asking somebody if they can move a show half an hour and trying to thread a needle between a wedding and some. But this $600,000, if somebody came and said, what are the projects? We have an idea. We're a little bit hazy, but we're getting there. What are the timelines? I'm not actually sure. I, I think Columbus, from what I hear, isn't going to start until next year. What is the estimated cost of each project to some level of detail beyond just a spreadsheet that doesn't add up? Those are basic, simple questions. I believe they're within the purview of the council, just as we just offered somebody to use State Street to park cars for three hours. And we're talking here about spending $600,000. So I am leaving some broadness there on purpose. And if they're just milling and overlaying, then just say we're milling overlay. If we are ripping up an entire street and rebuilding it, then state that and, and show the plan. I think for another example is Safe Us to Schools on the other end of the spectrum. Much bigger project, much more complex. I remember the plans. We had a public meeting for those. I stood and I looked at the giant 24 by 36 things. So it just depends on the project. And I think that there has to be some touch and feel. And my last example I'll offer is, we do this a lot with applications for events too. If it's a walk-through town and there's no road closures, there's a sense here of what's enough. If you want to close down State, Water High and Low Street, we go nuts. And if it's River Fest, I'm going to close down all of downtown. We go nuts, rightfully so. Same thing can apply here. We just have to get into the swing of things. The last thing I want to say is just on the timeline and the process. There has been a process before Merrimack and before High Street were the projects of the day. Water Street, my ward was the project of the day. And the project planning involved a contractor, a single person. If you've had this project in your ward, you know who he is. He walks around the tape measure thing all the time, very competent. But he's literally planning the project as they're building it. So I would have to go out there and meet with him like every day and say, hey, I'm not going to say his name. What are we doing here? What are we doing there? Why did we dig up this thing in front of this guy's house and need him for three days with no access to his driveway? Questions like that, and they mount. And sometimes you end up with a High Street, sometimes you end up with, I believe, we helped shape Merrimack Street, the Ward 4 council did, but we took to be a little more grand about it, helped shape it. And I think it was a positive experience. So I, I, the last thing is this timeline thing. Maybe the, the chief of staff or the chair would like to answer. Tell me what the first shovel is going to go on the ground. Columbus, I've heard, is next year. Arlington is getting other infrastructure work done. And I don't know anything about Boardman Street personally, or the Ward 3 council doesn't help. Because I, I just don't know. And maybe I don't know, and that's fine. So I'm not trying to slow anything down. I'm trying to get to measurable, repeatable results. And that comes from planning and presentation. It doesn't mean there has to be betas being paid more money to study things we already know. Our in-house engineer can do it. If there's no lines, great, it's a simple application. They get a stamp from the council in no time. I hope that helps answer the questions.
Thank you, councilors. Mr. Juven, did you want to respond?
Sure. As far, as far as, I, I, I think from the administration's perspective, I think DPS would appreciate this too. I think it would be helpful to know exactly what the city council's looking for. I think we want consistency as far as, you know, what's the process, what's the criteria? Is this condition on going forward with construction project? We want to know exactly what the city council's looking for, and what the decision point is, and what that process is. You know, it's unfortunate that we're, we're here in, you know, approaching July 1st. I mean, obviously, we all wish we were back in the wintertime or maybe when we submit this back and, and maybe develop this process. But here we are today. As far, and then again, this is, the goal is to provide, is to allocate $600,000 to go towards the road and pavement plan that obviously the council does not think is perfect. And we're, we're all trying, we're all trying to work this collaboratively to fix something that has been broken for decades, if not a century old. We're, we're making steps towards that. As far as timeline, timeline, councilor, you know, again, I'm not a DPS guy. You know, we would have to, we would have to allocate our in-staff resources. But even some jobs like Merrimack Street, we did hire an engineer to pump you some survey work for us. We need some that. So it would be minimal, I'm not saying hundreds of thousands of dollars, but there would be costs in order to, to kind of do some of that, that survey work. But also, it's the, it's the process of how long this process will take. And then it's the notification to the contractors that we're ready to go. And that's, that's something we're always beholden to, is trying to get those contractors into the last week of August, the first week of September. So I mean, it's a moving target. Again, I'm not a DPS person. I wish they were here to discuss this. But it would be helpful, I think, to really nail something down as far as what exactly the council's looking for. Because I'm afraid that we may go down a downward spiral if we don't set that up soon.
Then, I think we got to close some resolutions. What's it? Councilor Wallace?
Yeah, I just, I, I don't feel comfortable boarding that money before we have time to discuss the beta plan. I mean, again, the streets are Ward 4. I want them done. But it just, we're one day away. So my question is similar to, to Councilor Z. Is, do, is this a critical task to have this money in the next two days? Is this even going to be spent? And if, if in fact, we still have Chapter 90 money, that's $500,000, and the sidewalks, that's $350,000. We still have a big chunk of change to get us where we need to for the rest of the year. And we can work out the details of process and understanding beta. Because this, this is. And we can work out the details of process and understanding beta, because this is new for all of us. We're, we are entering to new territory, but I want to make sure we get it right and not rush. And I want the public to know what's going on. They didn't see the C now. I mean, they haven't seen the beta plan. I know I said that before, but anyways, that's what I'm saying.
Before we move on, and I recognize it's still a known problem. One possible way towards a resolution would be for us to schedule a special council meeting in Labor Street, say Thursday, if we could have a chance to look at the beta plan. I'm not suggesting that that's the preferred plan, but this is one path we may have available if the council is uncomfortable at this corporation and holding up the possible contracting and construction during the building period. But put that in the back of your head and imagine.
I just want to clarify as far as, and Ethan can tell you the time it would free cash, I believe, if it has to be spent by certain date, I believe, is July 1st in the rules. Or is it maybe July?
It's June 30th.
July 30th?
Eleven fifty-nine.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And then, can we ask Ethan on the, I thought, I thought we had a two-week race period, but maybe not. Well, while he's answering that, I just want to clarify that the Chapter 90 funding, we don't have that in hand yet. It's still working through the, the state legislature process. So that's, it's been through the House, it's been through the Senate, and eventually it'll come back to us. We don't have that funding in hand or in the House. At this point, there's no funding to continue to manage this at this point. But hold up.
Before we go further, Mr. Man's hand is not up. I hope the mayor has raised their hand on the left hand. Mayor Holliday.
Thank you. So how about this for a path forward? We can approve the $600,000 for roads and sidewalks so that we can ensure that the money is available in an account, because it would be go into the roads and sidewalk account, followed by on the next council meeting, an approval of the roads and sidewalks after everyone has an opportunity to look at the beta plan.
Second, Mayor, possibly.
Counselor Z, I think that's the amendment that I'm proposing. That's exactly, bring it in, yes, bring us the list. How about a little bit more? When, you know, how, what's the locus, what's the distance, you know, some details. And then, I can't speak for anybody else. You can decide how much detail is enough detail for you. And that could also depend on how close the project is. If Arlington's not until next year, maybe you don't have the detail yet. But I mean, that's essentially what I'm saying. So that's, that's how I, that is the intent of the amendment. So yes, it's to get the funds encumbered so we can move forward with the condition stated.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Wallace. That's how I actually amend it. Counsel Wallace?
Yes, I'll just make things a little more simple. I will withdraw my motion, oh, except you accept it as a present.
Okay, I will withdraw.
With the Columbus specific.
Thank you. So we're down to a simple amendment.
I think we are, Mr. President. Sorry. Right now on the floor, I understand that we have a motion, we have a motion approved, you know, a motion to amend that the condition upon detailed plans presented to the council prior to the start of the year.
With no date specific, is that correct?
No, 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 specific and detailed.
So we could, in fact, if I'm a term of this correctly, if I'm a simple, I'm stating that to you, approve the amendment with a date specific. And then move to the approval of the underlying motion to approve the funding.
Correct, Mr. President. I didn't put a date on it because that is based on whenever they want to move forward. I mean, if they have something ready for July 4th, great. If they don't, that's okay, too. That's, that's whenever you're ready. And I'm happy to strike the word detail if that is giving people heartburn. I just need a plan, and then you can decide how detailed it is to earn your vote. And if you don't like it, great. If you do like it, that's great, too. But so I will do that. So I will get to that.
The mention on the floor then would be the condition that plans presented to the council prior to the start of the year.
That seems like a reasonable.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like a job on this? And let me check our councils. Mayor Holliday, your hand is still up. I think that, I don't know if that's an inadvertent. Or if you wish to add something else, I think we're ready for those. Thank you, Mayor Holliday. Counsel Wallace?
Sure, just a question. It sounded like the mayor was saying that we wouldn't specify the streets right now, that when we would specify, the money would go to some certain fund. Unless I understood that correctly. Okay.
Okay. Role call.
It's a roll call on the motion to amend just the condition that plans are presented to the council prior to the start of the year. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devon?
Yes.
And we have on the floor a motion approved with that amendment.
Is there any discussion of the motion to approve the appropriate? Very nice. Roll call.
Motion approved as amended. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devon?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Next one is motion to approve HW 001 trackless vehicle 225,000.
Second.
So this is a new vehicle for DPS. The current trackless has effectively lived its life. This was amended and changed. The funding source was originally designated to be free cash. The administration came in and recommended changing the funding source to be the downtown paid parking fund in its entirety, the whole 225. The primary reason, I believe, is that throughout questioning during committee, we figured out that this is, while it can be used in other parts of the city, it is primarily used for removal of snow downtown. And so it made sense to align it with the downtown paid parking fund. There will be some attachments that go with this, which may ultimately lead to it being used a little more in the rest of the city. But it seemed like the bulk intent was downtown, and that was the reason for the change. So it is coming to you amended, not the vehicle description or the amount of the source. And that, the committee voted by a vote of three to zero, both to approve it first time and then to approve it following the amendment as well.
Second. Discussion of this motion to approve. Very nice. Roll call.
Roll call on the approval of 225,000 HW 001. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devon?
Yes.
Counselor Connell. And Counselor McCollum.
Next is to approve, a motion to approve Highway 007, which is one six-wheel dump truck with plow and the amount of 110,000.
Second. Counselor Z?
Okay. This is a replacement dump truck for a frontline vehicle. DPS stated that the existing vehicle has essentially run its life and would be removed from the fleet, and it was voted by committee three to zero to recommend approval.
Further discussion? Very nice. Roll call.
Roll call, approval of 110,000. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devon?
Yes.
Mr. President, if I may have a minute or two, if you make more copies, I'd like to.
Yes. We have a brief session.
I didn't make my own.
I don't need any more stuff. I usually write something small at night in the web, and then I just add to it the next day. Just to get something under, I guess.
I was told someone was here. Listen, whenever again, I look like every night this week.
I just, you know, after the buzzer would go, I thought you.
Yeah. You said, and you're. All right. Yes. Do I, what am I finding? Counselor President. Counselor Shan, any? So, so, but you find here, so like. Five weeks, a year, it's usually.
Yeah. Life, lifetime.
And we didn't get, we didn't get the CDC's. Yeah, we come in. What happened to CDC?
Maybe tap.
Maybe the states, we have some time with CDC.
Yeah. Yeah, we voted that, we voted that September, November.
I know, it just like, felt like the next. No, that is handy. But you've got tons of stuff.
All the veterans there.
Yeah, I think I'm going to do that Thursday, actually. Sorry. Can you do it?
That's not how I can do it, but yeah.
But we had standing July 1, and I was going to do all CDC, but now I'm going to try and do artist stuff, this thing, and whatever else I can help together, together for general services. Yeah, talk also. Do you know? Do you know what's up?
I have a hat of water. Do you know?
Do you know, like, when the government, the neighbor vibes would be like a wall home? Would they say, did they do anything different? How was it? Say it to your.
I've been seeing it. It's like, we just take a nap.
It takes so much time. Are we about right?
And then, and also, we can maybe, we can, we can.
I've been doing it in committee, I've seen it before. It's sounding like.
Let me rush this. No. I just got my weapon.
How'd you get in the driveway? How'd you get in the driveway?
I totally forgot, I was going to leave me a little outside. I did. Your steam's going to infect your bulldog.
Don't worry about the rain.
Yes. I was a little hot, and I was going to keep this stuff out. Keep the, keep the mood.
Mood like, that one vibe, yeah. It's very hot. It's a little hot, it's a little tight. That scrubber.
Okay, we're in order again. Again, as the first to orient this.
We're back in session, and I have sufficient roll call sheets, I'm sure.
Motion to approve Hale Street safety improvements, HW 009, $100,000.
Second. Move that second. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a $100,000 in total, broken up into two parts. $25,000, you may recall from our recent measure that we took up to complete an architectural fence that is currently an orange plastic thing that's been up for a while, so that'd be 25 of the 100. The remaining 75 would be for primarily a survey of Hale Street to help start the determine feasibility for roadway changes, improvements, which could include widening, bike lanes, sidewalks, et cetera. It was voted three to zero. It is in Ward Five, so Ward Five Counselor, if I missed anything, is correct where you're at.
That's the call.
Thank you, Counsel President. No, I think it would be great. It's a great, I mean, it's, appreciate the light.
I will point out that the City Services voted in favor of this, made the presentation of the meeting. Further discussion? Very nice. Roll call.
Roll call on 110, 100 HW 009. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devon?
Yes.
Counselor.
Motion to approve HW 012, 47962 sander inserts for dump trucks.
Second. Move that second. Counselor Z?
This is a three-zero recommendation from committee. This is a DPS request to add equipment. The primary reason is that right now, when it's time to do the salting or sanding runs in the city, they're having to call trucks back to Perry Way in order to reload or to switch out, and this would allow more trucks to stay out longer. And I think Deputy Director Tuplo would also really like to have the salt shed extended, but that's another request. This one here is just for the Sanders, sander inserts. Three-zero.
Further discussion? Roll call.
So approval by HW 012. Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Devon?
Yes.
Counselor Z? Motion to approve HW 013, 20,000 generator connection at Senior Center.
Second.
This also comes to you three-zero from committee. Unlike some of the other ones, this is suggested to be funded from the Senior Center revolving fund. Long story short, is the city was able to have a generator, lightly-used generator donated, and now it needs to be installed. And so the, the twenty thousand is to cover some additional hardware, uh, namely the transfer switch and then the, uh, the concrete pad that it sits on. I think the goal here is to be able to expand the usability of the Senior Center, uh, during, uh, events, you know, heat emergencies and so forth, so that if the power goes out, this is the building that continue to run heating, heating, um, heating stations in the winter when needed, cooling stations in the summer, and then of course, any other fiasco or storm that you may run into. Three nine.
Might ask a question of the chair. You, on that, what does he have to do in the, uh, in the training part? Right. Uh, let's see. Unless Ethan can beat me to it, I'll, I'll look it up for you. Um, man. You can respond, please.
Yes, um, the balance in the revolving fund, um, as of this submission was a hundred and two thousand.
Thank you, that satisfies me.
Sure.
Further discussion. There are none roll call? Approval of, uh, H W zero thirteen. Councillor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Roll call. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to take the next two collectively, which is Water Street Lift Station design, as well as Story Ave Pump Station Rehab Design. Uh, both are funded from Sewer Retained Ermings, a hundred and thirty-four thousand and a hundred thousand respectively.
Second. Move that second, my councillor, call in discussion.
So, Mr. President, the deputy director spoke to these two. Uh, Water Street Lift Station is, um, currently experiencing at times inundations of water from the river and is at risk at, from storms, particularly during more easters, and so something needs to happen with the Water Street Lift Station. Um, it may involve, um, purifying and buttressing it in its current place, it may involve moving it. It's not a capacity issue at this time, it's primarily a location problem, and, uh, most immediately, uh, there's a diesel fuel tank that needs to be heightened or something has to happen with it. So this, the Water Street Lift Station in particular is designed to, the design is to explore those options, move, elevate, whatever, and try and figure out a solution, um, obviously it does not include any construction funds. The Story Ave Pump Station is essentially, uh, an end of life sort of situation where the Story Ave Lift Station's old and it suffers from some of the same safety challenges that we heard about when we did the other lift station, um, uh, on Graff Road, uh, particularly having to put people down in confined spaces, so it's a combination of two different things. We're told that generally right now, the Story Ave Pump Station is not expected to need to get bigger, it just needs to be upgraded and rehabbed, but that the planning department will conduct a build out as they often do and to try and figure out if that is in fact the case. And the hundred thousand dollars would again go towards the design of that rehab, no construction possible. Uh, we did vote on these separately in committee, I'm trying to do things along with both more three zero.
Out of free cash or out of?
Both of these are funded out of Sewer Retained Ermings.
Further discussion. There are none roll call? Motion approved both a hundred and thirty-four thousand and the one hundred thousand. Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Next is to, uh, approve the watershed, public supply protection, uh, the source is Water Retained Ermings, the amount is two hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a, um, a, essentially what they're asking us to do here is to take the two hundred and put it aside, there's no specific use for this funds at the moment. The idea was to try and bank some money, uh, for a future land acquisition, so it, the idea was sort of like the open space for community preservation. If an acquisition were to become available, uh, this would be some money to, you know, depending on the size of the parcel I'd buy it, it would be part of that, um, uh, purchase. It's two hundred from Water Retained, it was a two to one vote from committee to recommend, um, and I was the dissenting vote.
Thank you. Thank you, yes. Further discussion. Roll call. Motion approved watershed, two hundred thousand dollars, councillor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Council Z, Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
No.
Council Connell.
No.
Council Devlin.
No.
Motion passed.
Next up, Mr. President, is lower artichoke, artichoke reservoir dam design, uh, coming from Water Retained Ermings, one hundred and fifty thousand.
Second.
Thank you, so, um, this is, um, something we've heard a little bit about, um, the concern is, uh, potential, I guess, backwash or backflow from the river into the reservoir, this is part of a larger theme I think we've been discussing, which is protection of the water supply and so forth. Um, we did have staff from DPS, and the probably most salient thing was that the dam is a lot bigger than it looks, so when, when you look at it, you, you see a visible part of it, but apparently it wraps considerably around, so this hundred and fifty thousand is for design to try and figure out what possible configurations, upgrades, replacements could be made to it, um, to fortify it and potentially protect uh, against that risk for our public water supply, it was a three zero vote in committee, uh, thank you.
Further discussion. Roll call. Motion approved why one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Councillor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
See?
Next up is a, uh, transfer from free cash to the Stabilization Trust Fund in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
So this is a transfer to Stabilization Fund in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, sound like a broken record. Um, I think we all know what the stabilization fund is, this is not a capital stabilization fund, this is the so-called rainy day fund, uh, with a much larger balance in it, this is the recommendation coming from the finance director trying to get closer to a percentage. It was two, uh, percentage of the general fund is usually the ratio that's used, it was a vote of two to one in committee, I was the dissenting vote.
Further discussion. There are none roll call? Score three, two hundred thousand dollars in the stabilization fund, councillor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
No.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
No.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up is a transfer of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from free cash into the Compensated Absences Fund.
Second.
Thank you, this is a, uh, a transfer, the compensated absences fund is utilized when an employee retires and there are outstanding obligations to purchase back sick time or other things like that. Um, the current balance in the account is less, thirty-eight thousand dollars or so, um, so this will increase the balance in there substantially. Uh, the reasoning given, provided was that there are a number of expected, although, uh, unguaranteed, they're not, not sure, uh, retirements, and so the idea was to put this in, uh, based on those estimations done, uh, if, if those folks do retire, then this fund would be used for that purpose. If they don't retire, they would just remain in there until perhaps they do, it was a two to one vote, uh, in favor, I dissent it.
Further discussion. There is none roll call? This is, uh, motion approved a hundred and seventy-five thousand, compensated absences fund. Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
No.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Question Z.
Next up is a transfer of a hundred thousand dollars to the, uh, O P A, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, one hundred thousand dollars from free cash.
Second. Move that second, my councillor, Tontar, yes.
Long story short, we're trying to push a rock up a big hill to meet these O P As, and, you know, we're trying to hit that actuarial curve, this is a hundred thousand dollar drop into that bucket, and something you probably see again, it was three oh out of committee.
Further discussion. There are none roll call? Motion approved one hundred thousand dollars, O P A. Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Anything else, guys?
Yes, Mr. President, next is Hoseur Cleveland's Fire Department, zero zero six, thirty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Three zero out of committee, hoses are end of life, we did talk about this turn in C I P, and the chief spoke to it, uh, this would go to replace, uh, lines that have, uh, exceeded their, or are exceeding their limits.
Further discussion. There are none roll call? Motion approved thirty thousand, help pose replacements, councillor Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Motion to approve I T zero zero one, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, I T hardware.
Second.
Okay, um, this is a combination of different things, but primarily, this is a continuation of rolling over workstations individually, completing upgrades on the C D C mail server that was started, and, um, it was a three zero vote out of committee.
Further discussion. Roll call. Motion approved two forty-five, I T hardware, councillor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Next is Park, Parks Field Office, zero one six, sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, which was to be transferred for a lease, and the motion is to receive and file.
Second.
So we talked about this in committee, uh, it, in our first meeting and then our second meeting. Uh, I am thoroughly confused, uh, as to the status of Low Street and so forth, the, um, the intent to lease remains in neighborhood and city services, uh, but the will of the committee was to recommend to you that we receive and file this. We frankly didn't get any pushback from the administration during committee, so I'm assuming that this, you know, is, is an open discussion, but at this point, there's nothing actionable on the sixty-five, so we recommend we receive and file it, we can take it up again if there is a desire to do so.
Further discussion. Roll call. And see, file sixty-five thousand, councillor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Next is Parks, uh, one pickup truck with plow, forty-three thousand eight hundred.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, it's a pickup truck with a plow, um, I think this has been discussed ad nauseam during the C I P, the original request was for two trucks, this is for one truck. Um, it goes to a, it came to a vote of three zero, committee to recommend.
Further discussion, yes. Further discussion. Roll call. Motion approved forty-three thousand eight, councillor Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Uh, yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Next is the infield groomer, fifteen thousand from free cash.
Second.
This is for Parks, uh, the, the reasoning provided was that Parks is currently, uh, responsible for grooming infields across a variety of different fields. Um, don't ask me which ones, um, but they are responsible currently, they're towing some sort of a thing behind an A T V and requested this to help, uh, make it easier, the vote was to, uh, recommend for approval by a vote of one to, so one in favor and two opposed.
Further discussion.
And, and the motion to, yeah, motion.
Was there, uh, the motion is. Good for you, correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Roll call. Motion approved fifteen thousand dollars infield groomer, councillor Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
No.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
No.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
No.
Council, uh, and that's it, motion passed.
Uh, next is, uh, planning and development, traffic, safety improvement projects, one hundred thousand dollars coming from free cash.
Second.
This was a bit amorphous, uh, there are a number of traffic issues around the city, um, I, I don't know that we sussed out a specific list of items. Um, we did discuss, you know, for example, in my board, uh, spending some of this towards Marches Hill, there's certainly other hotspots on the water, which you can speak to. Um, but it was sort of a general, we, we spend a hundred thousand dollars. The description, um, does, does mention a few areas, it does mention Marches Hill and so forth, Colby Farm Lane, as we know, is a hotspot, Atkinson Common Pioneer, um, but it does not specify any specific amount, specific things we will be doing or undertaking, um, still that the committee, uh, while the committee then, uh, motioned to two to one, I dissent it, on the lack of detail.
Further discussion. Roll call. Motion approved all one hundred thousand traffic safety projects, councillor Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
No.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Uh, yes. All right, next is the, um, surveillance camera integration, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, motion to approve.
Second.
So this is, uh, got a couple of pieces to it, um, first is that, um, apparently not all the cameras are feeding into the police department at present, so part of this money would be used to do that, um, and so that they would have visibility, I guess, across the city. It would also allow that the police department to harmonize, to, uh, for the city to harmonize to one camera vendor, I guess there are some different ones between the schools and so forth. The second aspect is that the cameras downtown, in-street and so forth have not been operational, and this part of this money would go to help make them operational. And so in theory, at the end of this, all the cameras work, all the cameras are homogenized, all the cameras are visible from the dispatch center of the police department. It was a three to zero vote, committee to approve.
Further discussion. I will, um, just off our comment from the chair, I hope you can, uh, there's no objection. I vote against the incorporation of funds originally to survey private citizens and their daily activities in Market Square years ago. I consistently voted against that kind of surveillance, it's invading of personal space, it's an invasion of our privacy and our way to, uh, create an unlimited access, uh, to, um, the public spaces that we all enjoy. Uh, I object to surveillance, uh, per se, and I object to surveillance in this instance related to something that I thought was invasive at the time. Imagine, um, we, we, we retain that, that decision. Um, I have not seen evidence that those surveillance cameras are effective at, um, weakening down, um, the, the problems that they face in terms of security, uh, debt prevention and the like. Uh, if someone wants to provide that kind of evidence, I'd be happy to read it, haven't seen it. In the meantime, we did, by then, by then, we lose our rights. I will vote no, I urge you to say. Roll call. Roll call on approving one hundred and five thousand for surveillance camera integration, councillor Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Connell.
No.
Council Devlin.
No.
No.
Okay, next is the, uh, electric cruiser pilot program, also known as the Tesla for the police department.
Second.
The, uh, the funding source in this case is the L E D streetlights, and that is sixty thousand, I heard a second out there, um.
Will it talk second?
Thank you.
We talked to the marshal about this, um, he is intending to use this as his vehicle, um, and he said that, uh, the most likely place where it would go would be in the garage that you could access through Green Street, we were asking, because we're asking where it would be charged, and so they will have to install a charger there, they, they could also install one in the Green Street lot, but it seemed like that was the case. I was also asked if, if, uh, other members of the department were excited or not excited, he seemed to think that many people would enjoy driving this, this new, uh, new, new family thing. Um, the voting committee was two to one, I, I was the one, um, we just didn't want to be a guinea pig, we'd love to see how they work out in other departments, which they are going to, and then we could try it, so it was two to one in committee.
Further discussion. Have you got any questions on the chair? Is it Tesla?
It is a Tesla, yes, apparently they have started some sort of law enforcement program where they make Teslas to be police cars, and the cottage industry, I guess, is forming around them to build cages and the things you, you have to do to make a car a police cruiser, so it's an evolving and exciting area.
Is it one of those golden things, for the doors to the gym?
Not quite that cool, I don't think, I think it just has regular doors, but the picture was in the SIP and it, like, in.
I would, I would just add, it's the only, uh, naked model that complies with some of the needs of the police department.
Further discussion. Roll call.
Motion approved. Excuse me, point of order.
Thank you, this is over, I apologize, I missed your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. To the chair, if I may, is this a replacement vehicle? Is this a replacement for a vehicle that is no longer working? Or is this just part of this experiment?
It was not stated to be an additional cruiser, I mean, not stated to be a replacement cruiser. It's a new cruiser in the fleet. In the budget we just approved, there was money to purchase some new cruisers for other frontline vehicles. But my understanding is that this is an additional vehicle and not taking another vehicle off the road specifically for this one.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy any other vote?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Tontar, it just, the description says that the pilot, it just skipped, the pilot replaces one of the four explorers. Mr. President, can you clarify on that?
I believe the marshal's plan is to increase the budget to replace two explorers this year. They would gas power once and then go with this pilot program as well. But I believe we're a year behind on our replacement program, because we didn't replace any of these last year.
So the point is, the pilot, this pilot, you supersede the replacement of one vehicle in the fleet with four explorers. Counsel Devlin.
If I remember, at the SIP discussion and the budget workshop, was that this was part of it. He was just using this as one of his replacement vehicles.
Counsel, uh, counsel president, just to clarify, he was going to cascade his fire power through the organization. So that's what everybody uses.
Right.
So, just set it different.
Further discussions?
Roll call. Motion to approve 60,000. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
No.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
No.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Motion to passes.
Counsel Z.
Okay, Mr. President, with the indulgence, we'll take the next three collectively. Dive team equipment, six radar units, and records room. These are all police. PD-006, 005, 008, 41, 625,000, and 20,000 respectively.
Second.
So let me go through each one. The dive team is essentially, having a dive team is on life support. If we don't replace the materials, the equipment, we're pretty much letting go of the dive team. The folks have to keep certifications and so forth. So the marshal's argument is there is value to having a dive team, and this is just simply the cost to do it. And so this would update, or not upgrade, but update, bring everything up to modern standards. As you can imagine, you probably don't want to dive with equipment that is not up to snuff. Six radar units. This is something that, these are everyday units that are in, I think primarily mounted in the cruisers. They have a lifetime, and then because they have to be certified, so they're measuring actually, so that tickets can be given off of them. And this is a simple rotation, six out, six in. And then finally, we have the records room. I don't know, somewhat similar to the building department. This is, you know, the police have to maintain vital records for a number of things, incident reports and things like that. And this is an upgrade to that in the amount of $20,000 to make it easier and better to do so. All three passed the committee three to zero recommendation.
Second. Further discussion?
Roll call. Motion to approve PD-06, 05, 08. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Next one is 25 body-morn cameras, PD-011. It's a combination of Free Cash and some other funding sources as well. The amount is $3,400. 3412.
Second. Move to the second.
So I think that this has also been talked about a little. I think that the most important thing coming out of committee is that the 3412 is just the upfront investment to buy the physical hardware. But in order to run these cameras and capture their videos and store them and so forth, the licensing is really where the cost comes in. And the marshal wanted us to know very clearly that there's about a $26,500 annual fee that would be expected. And that by buying these cameras, we would be committing to five years with them. So about $100,000 over the next five years. He didn't say a positive thing or a negative thing about that, but just wanted us to note it. And that if we would like to move forward with these, that we should expect to see that in the budget, starting in FY '23. It did pass committee three to zero.
Discussion, questions? Roll call.
Point of order, didn't, aren't we doing this?
I'm sorry, Counsel Vogel, I can't hear you. Try again.
I'm sorry, I thought that these were presented collectively. And then we're going to get a description and vote on all of them, or we just?
No, we're going individually.
I did PD-6, 5, and 8 together. This one, I didn't know if there would be questions, so I left it out on its own.
Sorry, thank you.
Fair enough.
Motion to approve 3,00412. Roll call. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
The last one, the last two will take collectively. These are schools, ground master, 3,500D, the lawnmower, and the snow thrower. Snow thrower attachment, motion to receive file collectively.
Second. Move to the second. Questions?
The committee discussed these, and we had a similar discussion that we have all the time about parks versus DPS versus schools. Long story short, is the administration has chosen to withdraw these. So we recommend by three to zero to receive the file and take it up another time perhaps.
Further questions? Discussion?
Roll call. See, file both items. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
All right, Mr. President, rolling on, the next, so we're out of the CIP. That concludes all of the items. By my count, all of them passed with one, one that was amended. Next up is item number three on our agenda, which is a motion to approve ordinance 79, plumbing and gas fees.
Second. Move to the second. Discussion?
Okay, so this was brought to us by Counsel Tontar. The, as you can see in the order, it is primarily a change in a fee to increase them. We've had fee increases in the past, and a similar discussion ensued here where the rates haven't been increased or changed in a long time. I believe it was 1995, this was said. I may have the year wrong, because my head's still looking for things. But it's been a while, was the argument. There was one new fee in there, and that was the re-inspection. So in the event that something failed and you need to be re-inspected, there's a new fee for that. Currently, essentially unlimited re-inspections are offered as part of the current, as part of the initial cost. The vote of the committee was to recommend approval, two to one. I dissented.
Then, further discussion? I might add a comment that this is the reason why the committee, the overview, chose to pull all of the references to fees into a table that was acted upon by the council for, you know, in future years at one time. So fees don't get backed up and then pushed forward, and back up again, and pushed forward individually. The second, as an omnibus, table of fees each year, and that way can help us move forward. Further discussion?
Roll call. Order 79, first reading. Plumbing and gas fees. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Go. Counsel Z.
Okay, next up is transfer 99. It's a transfer in the amount of $8,519, primarily from library salary staff to library heat and electricity, and a very small amount to dues and memberships.
Second. Move to the second. Discussion?
So the source is available, because there were some positions that went unfilled or underfilled as a result of COVID, leading to a little bit of surplus there. The transfer, too, is necessary for heat and electricity, because cuts were made to that line and they ended up being open. Obviously, nobody knew where COVID was going to go. The HR dues and memberships is so de minimis, we need to talk about it a lot, but it's $19. The motion to approve comes to the recommendation of three to zero.
Further discussion?
Roll call. Approval of transfer 99. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Next up is transfer number 100, which is a transfer of $16,580 from the waterfront paid parking fund to the maintenance waterfront park in the same amount.
Second.
So the source of this is the dissolution of the NRA. As we know, resulted in the monies that they were holding being transferred into this account. And so they are available, they've just been available since that time. And the recipient is the maintenance of waterfront park. The, really, the key here is that the waterfront trust has been caring for what we just talked about recently, which is essentially the new part of the key slot. We've got to come up with a cooler name for the grassy area that was converted. It'll be something cool to refer to that, but they've been taking it, taking care of it with the same contractor they use for the rest of the park. So it's real homogeneous. And my understanding, or our understanding, committee, is that that arrangement with the city has been a bit ad hoc, and it's essentially been submitting receipts or what have you, and so we need to reimburse them. I do also understand, I do from a recent meeting, that some sort of MOU has been executed between the mayor and the waterfront trust. And maybe the mayor could share that with the council. I don't know what the contents of that are. That was one of my questions during committee, and that's why it came, comes to two to one, the motion to approve.
Further comments? Second.
Do you remember, roll call, motion to approve transfer 100. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, next is a transfer for a standing desk for myself. It's a collectively to help move things along, transfers number 101, 102, and 103.
Second. Move to the second.
All right, so once, yeah, 101 and 102 have some similarities in that they are a transfer and the source is the water retained earnings and the sewer retained earnings respectively. And that's one similarity. They're both coming from their respective enterprise funds. And that's on the source end of things. As we know, retained earnings exist when there are years when there's an excess or a surplus that builds up over the years. And it's available for use in that fund for similar things. The reason they're also similar is on the destination. There's a sort of a split destination for both. One is to support the water and sewer rates that have been presented and proposed that are currently in public utilities, which are slated for discussion later on tonight. And essentially, part of making those rates balance is using some of the retained earnings to reduce what otherwise would be the increase. So you see that in transfer number 101, and that's in the amount of 100, and in 102, it's also 100. Then the other item is, and this is the same, is the lease of a vehicle. So we're looking at that co-purchase and utility body and so forth. You can see that in 101. And then you also see the same equipment in 102. So those are pieces of equipment, I believe, that are used across the enterprise funds that are being split up. And then transfer 103. The reason I did it collectively here is, again, it's referencing the same loader and so forth. In all three cases, the equipment that we're buying is a lease. So you will have to fund this again in the next two fiscal years. I believe it's a three-year lease. So they seem to make sense to go together. I will just say that, again, if you want to support the rates that are proposed, you have to support this. Otherwise, you can't effectuate the rates without making the transfer. It doable apart in parcel. We did vote on it collectively in committee, and it was three to zero.
What equipment?
What equipment? So, and it is, I'll give you the numbers here. So WA-007, which is a backco-purchase, $45,000, WA-008, these are the SIP identifiers. Utility body truck purchase, $25,000. HW-008, which is the loader, $24,000. Those are the three pieces of equipment, I believe.
Discussion?
Roll call. Motion to approve collectively, transfers 101, 102, 103. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, transfer, so that was 101, 2, and 3. Now we're on to 104. Fire department, Free Cash, to salary firefighters, fire overtime and dispatch overtime. The grand total transfers 110, now.
Second. Move to the second.
Perennial discussion, this is the, this is the, Free Cash is the source, which we know why that's available. The destination covers a few different ones. One was salaries. Usually, we see mostly overtime, but salaries were included in here, too. I believe the primary reason was a provisional firefighter ended up being used throughout the year rather than just being used here or there. And then overtime and dispatch overtime, we know quite well, those were both increased in the budget this year. And in last year, I believe, as well, making this transfer a little bit lower. But we're tracking about the same, you know, there's been no real material change in the grand total overtime. It just is, it is what it is. And as we know, the chief has stated, there have been, there have been some more long-term injuries and disabilities that have existed in previous years. It was three to zero.
Further discussion?
Roll call. Motion to approve transfer 104. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
105 is a transfer from library salary staff to parks, restrooms, parks maintenance supplies, and parks fuel oil. The transfer amount is $3,070.
Second.
We just talked about the library salary staff, so that's the same reason it's available. And the explanation provided for the $3,500 or so was just elevated fuel costs for parks and more attention necessary to the dogkins, people walking their dogs more COVID. Last year was a three to zero recommendation.
Further discussion?
Roll call. Motion to approve transfer 105. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Okay, the last two are order 254 and 255, a motion to approve collectively.
Second.
So we have the limits as opposed for various revolving funds. The electrical revolving fund currently sits at $90,000. If you look at your budget books, you find that they're at something like 80, high 80s in terms of how much they've spent. So the request comes from the finance director to increase for the next two days of FY '21. And then to make that change, jump over into FY '22 as well, to change it from 90 to 105. The two biggest things paid out of this fund are a portion of the, are the electrical, the wiring inspector, the city electrician's salary, and a portion of the building commissioner's salary. And those have increased a little bit, and when you add those two together, you're basically at 90. So they're asking for that, plus a little bit of slack that's utilized at times to pay for the inspections, the home inspections that are done. The committee agreed that the increase was reasonable and offers you a three to zero recommendation.
Further discussion?
Very good. Roll call. This is approval collectively in orders 254 and 255. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Last thing, Mr. President, is that we are meeting on Thursday for our standing meeting. We're going to take up probably the office stuff and the senior workoff and veterans workoff. On the 15th, though, is the one I wrote, that's our next standing meeting. We will be talking about Phillip Stride, so I'm just giving everybody a heads up. That, I'm asking now if you want to shake your head in, that was not referred to committee of the whole. And I'm trying to avoid the issues if everybody wants to come. If everybody's sort of like, no, then I'm not going to worry about it. Otherwise, I will pull it out tonight and refer it right back to committee of the whole. I'm seeing some shaking heads, no, so I will assume that we're okay. So you can come and listen anyhow if it works out that way. And I am done. Thank you.
That's good.
I believe, um, I don't believe the chair is here for reports and just trying to test. General government, likewise, there's nothing to report. Still, general government, I can say that the last thing we've discussed is where we are, we have to step back. Let's, I think, discuss.
Thank you.
Neighbors and services, nothing to discuss. Planning and Development. Yes.
I just want to remind folks that we do have a planning and development joint meeting with the planning, planning board on July 7th to continue the discussion on what committee is on. I know Counsel Wardline's already sent in comments. If anyone else wants to send in comments, please do so. And it is committee of the whole, so feel free.
Public safety.
Nothing further, thank you.
Public utilities.
Counsel. The chief.
Counsel Vogel.
I'm, no, I'll probably.
Yeah, yeah, I was just, I thought there was something going on.
Well, we did.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Nothing further, thank you.
Yeah, so this is order 257 that came in on, came in on June 7th. And it is noted for an increase in the water and sewer rates. I met with the water, when this came into committee, the Water and Sewer Commission had not yet met. They, I went to their meeting, which was two weeks ago on this coming Wednesday. And they did recommend the rates that are in the order, which is $5.90 for water. I don't know, you know, I didn't look at it that day, but I could do it if you let me. The, and so the Public Utilities Committee met the next day, Thursday. We discussed it. We ordered three to zero to approve those rates. We'd ordered 3 to 0 to approve those rates. And then subsequently, I did meet with the release burnite and told the energy director of DPS to go over the methodology for determining increase in rates. I did obtain the spreadsheet and the form that is going to be. So to come up with the rates, and I think people need to know this, first of all, the number of variables, one is the budget that was approved during the budget process for water and sewer. There was an increase in the water budget, 6.1% and an increase in the sewer budget of 2.1%. A large increase in the water budget was predominantly due to the algal bloom that we had a year ago and the necessity to be ready in case there is another one, right? For most, so we find that if you see it from two budget. The second piece of information that's critical is the transfer that we just did, which is $100,000 in water and sewer that is used to reduce the rates, right? So that, those were the ones that we just passed them. The water and sewer divisions have been examining the budget and I think they're getting closer to numbers that they are more confident in. So for instance, the 400 number increased in the number of accounts, approximately 8,300, I think it would be 8,700, right? So since each account has a fixed service fee for water and sewer, $25,000, that in each division that, that is out in $110,000, that doesn't have to be one concern in fees. So you got through all that, right? And then some estimates. One is an estimated consumption, all right? Again, that's a project that also is drawn up, is about, by about 4 million cubic feet, all right? Again, that, that stems from a close approximation of what they expect to see. That, that also contributed to the increase in rates. And then there is a standard, I think, of policy, 75 cent difference between tier one, which is up to 3,000 cubic feet, and then tier two, which is over that, right? And that factors in. So, um, all of those come together to the rates that you have before you, all right? Which a large increase, forget what we've seen over the past few years, but very much required, now widely requirement, right? The water and sewer divisions are attempting to even out their retained earnings right now as, I mean, you saw the transferring interest, $7,537 from water retained earnings projects and another 29,000 from sewer projects. We get to prove that, right? They do, they do not anticipate any addition to retained earnings, earnings in terms of the water budget to see in '21 and they were looking at maybe an additional 30,000 going into retained earnings in the sewer. So they're basically breaking even, right? In terms of additions to retained earnings. And this, these increases they anticipate will not result in increases in retained earnings. They think that, that numbers are pretty good for hitting what they anticipate to be their costs. Having said that, one of the commissioners, Owen Smith, a newer commissioner, wrote us some these in, in particular talking about retained earnings, is that, A, his recommendation to keep up each at about 5,000. They're aiming a little higher than that right now. And the reason they're aiming a little higher is that there are three sets of costs that they are considering. One of the fixed costs, right, you know, those $37 billion for waste water treatment plant that we bought about 10 years ago, another 10 years of pavement, $5 million for biofilters that we're paying for, about $19 million for the water treatment plant that we were paying for for a traditional 10 years. So those are fixed costs, the variable costs are based on consumption, right? And then, then what he was noting, the commissioners are concerned about the unknown costs. The algal bloom is an example of an unknown cost last summer, but there are potentially other unknown costs. And then we've seen this in other efforts to keep money in, in accounts. And, and the idea is, as they begin to address some of the capital needs, some of the physical needs, the unknowns would be, so for instance, if they were able to repair the Trump dam, all right, of years, that would reduce the uncertainty of events. So environmental partners is consulting for them. They are working with water sewer divisions. They anticipate getting a full report in July. At that point, they anticipate projecting out 20 years of anticipated cost investments and therefore effects. And we'll be probably seeing that around the beginning of the next calendar year because there could be an all about increases because there are anticipated increased investments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Are there any questions?
No question, just a comment. I'm, I'm supporting this because I've supported the other pieces, but I, I just wanted to say a few things. One is, my primary reason for supporting is that I have my eye on the need to do more water mains related to doing more roads. So I'm hoping that the connection will try to carry through here the investment we need to make. So that, that's my circle in the square kind of thing. I, I also want to telegraph that I personally will be very challenged to support a year increase, so I understand that there was some hinting that that could be coming, but this is already a 5, 5 point something percent on one end, the water end, and about a 3% increase. So I'm trying to respect the fact that, yes, if we want to make more investment, if we want to improve the resiliency of our water supply, which we've talked about through the SIP and other things, we need to start buttressing the funding, but to do another increase like in six months, I just, just saying it out there publicly, that would be, I will never say never, but I, it's very high unlikely that I would support it. And the last two things are just the constant things I hear from residents that I want to also mention are, you know, hoping that there's some effort to address taste and odor. This comes up all the time, if you, you know, you hear it from residents and there's some connection to the algal bloom and maybe doing a filter, but I think that that should move up in the priority because if we have a better product, we can sell more. That's my two cents, especially when I watch people carting water out of market basket. And the second one is allowing for separate meters for irrigation. Just, a lot of people fear, it's very unfair to pay sewer on water they don't put in the sewer. And I understand that that means somebody else has to carry that burden or carry that cost because you can't just erase it, but it's just a simple matter of fairness and paying what, what you get. And then the last one is one we debated in the past, which is balancing the flat, flat amount versus the, the rate. And that sometimes the, the flat amount hurts the lowest users, which are often those who are, have a single person household or things like that versus, so those are just some general thoughts. I will be supporting this, but I, I wanted to say publicly, I don't really want to do it again until next fiscal year. Look at it again. Thank you.
Chairman.